Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special business meeting for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, July 28. As always, we are meeting tonight on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Although, given that we're having an electronic public hearing, people may be joining us from other territories. But I myself am on Squamish territory tonight. We are having electronic meetings, so I have a statement that I need to read to council. Council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the Chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. When a council member disconnects or reconnects, so that this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the Chair that they wish to be placed on the speakers list by raising your hand if you're connected by video or simply saying "Chair" if you are connected by audio only. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. Council members shall put their telephone or computer on mute unless they are speaking. Same goes for our staff and any member of the public speaking tonight. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members, if you're having technical difficulties, please text our corporate officer, Ms. Arthurs. And if we are having technical difficulties on our end, we will recess the meeting for up to 10 minutes to sort those out. So, we have an amended agenda in front of us. Two amendments are Item 6.2, there's the motion from the Committee of the Whole which has been brought forward to this evening around the community conversation, and sole sourcing the consultant for the facilitation work on that. And 11A Correspondence for Action Requested has two new letters added to it. And then I will turn the floor over to Ms. Glinde with another amendment for the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Following third reading of the Camping Bylaw Amendment, staff are recommending that the district pause on consideration of adoption this evening. For clarity, the intent of the amendment was to be a short-term solution to support health and safety over the summer in advance of a policy update plan which is commencing this week and will provide a systemic and sustainable approach to the van dwelling and vehicle dwelling when complete in the fall. Sleeping in vehicles and camping on the roads is currently prohibited in the district through the Traffic Bylaw and Zoning Bylaw. Using these existing regulatory tools, including the existing Camping Bylaw, we will be working to gain compliance with that. Bylaw enforcement and RCMP will be focusing their efforts on congregations of vans, creating a risk to public health or wildlife or where we have received a complaint. The goal will be to move both sleeping and camping into a designated camping location and providing those individuals with options. The policy review work is underway. As I mentioned, it's commencing this week and is anticipated to come back to council in the fall with a plan. Ultimately, the district aims to regulate camping so that it takes place in permitted areas to safeguard community harmony and ensure risk mitigation. With that, staff recommend that council amend the agenda to remove Item 8B1, which is consideration of adoption of the amendment to Bylaw 2769, the Camping Bylaw. I'd like to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stoner. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification from staff. I'm just curious procedurally what the difference is in terms of the first three readings sitting there and not being given adoption versus rescinding first three readings.
I would prefer to defer to Robin Arthurs, our corporate officer, rather than -- for correcting me if I'm incorrect.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. If the bylaw sits at third reading until a potential amendment comes back, it's just sitting at third reading. If you rescind first three readings, the bylaw doesn't exist. The amendment doesn't exist, and it goes away. So procedurally, you could rescind third reading, you could rescind second, third reading. But as the bylaw is right now, if you rescind all three readings, it disappears.
Do you have a follow-up, Counselor Stoner? So what I think I heard, Ms. Arthurs, is that we could leave it as is, it could come back for amendment in the fall, or take it back to first reading, and an amendment could come forward in the fall, or simply nothing happens to it if it doesn't get adopted, so it just sits there and we have the same actions available to us in the fall when a report comes forward. Counselor Herford?
And on the rescinding question, if this proposed amendment was rescinded, it doesn't preclude us, the topic coming back from discussing it. It's not a defeat in which case we've already discussed it, we're not likely to loop back. Okay, and then what is the life? How long can something sit at third reading? Is there a set amount of time where something's meant to be actioned? And I'm just curious about the value of either of those. I haven't really contemplated that previously.
Typically, there is not a statutory life to how long the bylaw is sitting there for. This kind of bylaw, there is for development-related bylaws, but typically, we would reexamine and bring it forward with whether or not to kill it after about two years.
So, it will sit, and then it can be amended in the fall. It can sit, and then staff may bring back a motion to rescind and pass a new bylaw. But nothing gets actioned. The enforcement will take place through the Traffic Bylaw and the Zoning Bylaw and the Camping Bylaw that currently exists if adoption isn't read this evening. Is there a mover of the -- yes, Counsel Reese.
So I'm going to move adoption of the agenda as amended with the deletion of Item 8B1.
That is seconded by Counsel French. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Stoner?
Yeah, I won't be supporting the motion, although I appreciate that procedurally it may be similar. I do have concerns that this could sit here at third reading, and staff may bring forward an amendment in the fall, or propose that we bring forward adoption in the fall, and that just limits the amount of potential engagement that we could have. It means that we could do that to one sitting with little notice, as opposed to bring it back to at least second reading, which would require two public meetings on any amendment. So I would rather see this be rescinded.
Any other comments? Counsel Herford?
Thank you. I'd also like to see this rescinded ideally back to the beginning where we can start the discussion again with this amendment being potentially part of a suite of actions that will be coming in the fall. But even one step back, I think, would send a signal that we're not holding this till a time where there's going to be less communication or less interest from our citizenry to move to adoption in one meeting. So I think in the -- just to ensure transparency and to reduce stress in our community, that stepping back at least one reading, if not all the way back to the start, and start again on this one, would be a more appropriate course of action. And essentially have the same, without precluding the amendment as being part of whatever recommendations come forward. So I don't see council as a whole losing any opportunity by taking those steps. So I won't be supporting this particular motion.
Thank you. Counsel Penkil?
Yeah, I also won't be supporting the motion. I think we should have the opportunity to rescind and leave the consultant to do their work and make decisions there. I think leaving it at third reading with the consultant just starting, I think, doesn't leave enough openness about what the outcomes might be. And I think we're all interested in longer-term outcomes. We realize this is a shorter-term one, we're not going to hit that shorter-term objective, so let's rescind and move on clean in the fall.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counsel Stoner, Counsel Pattingill, Counsel Herford oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Ministerial Order M192, that this meeting is being hosted electronically this evening excluding in-person attendance, physical attendance. We are ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by live-streaming the meeting. A video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis, and the meeting is open to the public for electronic participation during the public hearing agenda item. Motion, if someone could move that, please. Moved by Counsel Pattingill, seconded by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I would like to now move on to 4A1. This is the Fees and Charges Bylaw around short-term rentals. There was a procedural question related to this. But is there any questions around this one, counsel? Counsel Stoner?
Yeah, the procedural question was if we should actually change the fee schedule after further work on the STR regulation, if it makes sense to move this as is first three readings.
Ms. Phillip is on the phone. Phone, not phone, screen. Go ahead.
Thanks. Through the Chair, yeah, I can address that question. So in discussion with our corporate officer, she's provided clarification that, yes, we can make changes to this procedural bylaw after it's received third reading and before it's adopted. And also, for further clarification, we can make changes to the fees and charges bylaw or any of the procedural bylaws, even after the short-term rental zoning amendment bylaw has gone through public hearing.
Is there anyone that would like to move first three readings? Counsel Stoner, you're moving that? Seconded by Counsel Anderson. Thank you. Any comments? Counsel Penkil?
I'll keep it short. I think I've expressed that I think we need a different solution, so I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counsel Pattingill opposes. Next up is the District of Squamish Municipal Tax Sale Deferral Bylaw. We are entertaining, and by provincial ministerial order, we can do first three readings and adoption this evening. I don't know if there is a staff person that is speaking to this. Ms. Boxroot is sharing her screen now.
Can you hear me and see me?
We can. I'll just remind you, Ms. Boxroot, that we are on a very tight timeline to get to another agenda item and get to 6 o'clock for a public hearing.
Okay, great. I will be brief. Good evening, mayor and council for the public. My name is Heather Boxroot, Chief Financial Officer. I will be providing a brief presentation today on the Municipal Tax Sale Deferral Bylaw Number 2768-2020. Also on the line to support any questions is Arlene Rattray, the district's tax clerk. Ministerial Order 159 issued in May 2020 has several finance-related items: the reserve fund borrowing, the revenue anticipation borrowing, and the annual report deadline changes, all of which have been addressed to date. However, what we are addressing today is the remaining finance-related items, which are the annual property tax sale one-year deferral and the tax sale redemption period one-year deferral. Firstly, the tax sale redemption period delay does not apply to the district because the district did not have any delinquent accounts in 2019 come the tax sale deadline. Therefore, no tax sale was held. However, the tax sale deferral for 2020 does apply, and staff are recommending that council exercise M159's option to delay by one year. To note, the ministerial order M192 also applies, as Mayor Elliott had mentioned, with the ability to adopt the bylaw on the same day as readings. Deadline for the adoption of the property tax deferral is August 31. Delinquent taxes are those taxes which have been outstanding for two years. The district currently has 56 accounts that are in delinquent position, which represent 132,000, all of which are assessed residential. For context and comparison, at the same time of year in 2019, the district had 221,000, and in 2018, 166. However, all were collected before the tax sale deadline. The district has not gone to tax sale for several years. The tax sale normally occurs the last Monday in September. If adopted, the 2020 tax sale will be deferred to September 27, 2021. Although the tax sale may be deferred, staff will continue collection activities. And it is important to note that if the deferred, the 2021 tax sale will contain two years, so 2018 and 2019's delinquent accounts. Interest will be continued to be charged on all delinquent accounts, and in terms of affordability, this bylaw may provide some relief for those property owners during this time. The next steps, if council adopts this bylaw, notice will be sent to each delinquent homeowner informing them that the tax sale has been delayed for one year to September 27, 2021. So staff are recommending the following: that the District of Squamish give first three readings to the District of Squamish Municipal Tax Sale Deferral Bylaw Number 2768-2020, and if three readings are given, that the District of Squamish Municipal Tax Sale Deferral Number 2768-2020 be adopted.
Thank you.
There you have it.
Counsel, any discussions? Yes, Counsel Reese?
I'll move it.
Seconded by Counselor French. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We can entertain adoption this evening, which is good because the deadline is August 31, and we're not meeting before then. So someone would like to move adoption? Moved by Counsel Herford, seconded by Counsel French. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Finally, and hopefully we can squeeze this in before the public hearing, is Item 5A1, Pemberton Bidirectional Bike Path RFQ Award. I will turn this over to Mr. Morewood.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Morewood. I'm the Capital Projects Manager for the District of Squamish. Tonight, I'm presenting on the Pemberton Bidirectional Bike Path RFQ Award. Before we get going, I just want to briefly explain the difference between an RFQ and a tender. There's two terms that I've used interchangeably, not interchangeably, but in past RTCs. The similarity is that they're both tools for soliciting a competitive bid in the marketplace. That means we send out a certain type of document on BCT bid to get bids back. The difference, though, is a tender is a fixed price, and it's a binding contract that when we receive bid prices from contractors, it's actually a binding price. An RFQ, also known as a request for quotes, is a non-binding price. And what this means is that we're able to negotiate the price or negotiate the scope before we sign the contract. So effectively, this gives us more flexibility before we get into the contract. The contract portion is still the same regardless of if it's a tender or an RFQ, but again, it gives us more flexibility upfront to negotiate with the lowest bidding contractor. I think in the future, I'll probably use contract award, just to kind of avoid uncertainty around the RFQ or the tender name difference. Moving back to the presentation itself, we're looking for the following resolutions: that the District of Squamish award the RFQ for the Pemberton Bidirectional Bike Path to Alpine Paving, and that the mayor and corporate officer be authorized to execute this agreement. So this is the -- we're planning on building a bidirectional bike path on Pemberton Ave. This is between Third Ave and Loggers Lane. The bidirectional bike path will be on the north side of the road. It's going to be separated by curves from the traffic, and there'll also be a sidewalk for pedestrians as well. We did look at doing a unidirectional bike path on each side of the road, but what we found was that space is really limited. It would have been challenging to build with the existing space, and it would have seen the removal of all parking on the south side of Pemberton Ave between the boundaries of the project. There was also operational challenges, mostly snow plowing, in having two separate unidirectional lanes. In the end, we decided that the bidirectional bike path on the north side of the road was the best option. This is going to connect to the bike lane on Third Avenue, as well as to Hunter Place, Discovery Trail, Quarter Trail, and Rhodes Park, as well as the future multi-use path over the Royal Wood Bridge or the Map and Line Channel. We received one bid from Alpine Paving, the price was $373,405. This is a unit price contract, meaning that the final price can vary somewhat based on the conditions that we find when we work. The last thing I'd like to mention is that part of this work is contingent on the vantage development and finishing certain utility work, as well as curbing gutter work. And what this means is that, actually, I did talk to them earlier in the week, and what they're saying is they're not expecting to be finished until October. It's really challenging to do work in October because there's a big weather risk. So what this might mean for us is we may have to push the schedule until probably late spring of next year. I am investigating whether certain parts of the work can be done ahead of time prior to the vantage being done, and then we're able to tie it in in October. There will be compromises to do this and potentially extra costs, so I'm fleshing out both options, and I will make a decision shortly on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morewood. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Penkil?
Yeah, thank you. We did receive some correspondence with some concern about bidirectional bike paths. You addressed some particular challenges with this site and some maybe trade-offs that make sense, but you also talked about snow removal and so on, which would be generally applicable. So do we, in general, have a plan that we will be going with bidirectional bike lanes, or in general, are we trying to go with the unidirectional on each side of the road?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. This is, to my understanding, the first bidirectional we've done. I'm not aware of any separated unidirectional bike paths we have in the district. You know, I think as we move forward, we'll do what kind of the space permits and what kind of the characteristics of the road allow. I foresee in the future that we're probably going to do both. I know we're looking at both on the new Pioneer connection. So again, I think if there's lots of space available, especially in greenfield sites where there's not kind of conflicting properties or other infrastructure, that if we're able to have sidewalks and unidirectional bike lanes, I think that's a good goal to have. But I think there's going to be lots of scenarios where it's really challenging to accomplish that, and a bidirectional bike path is probably the only effective solution we can reasonably do.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there someone who would like to move the staff recommendation? Moved by Counsel Herford, seconded by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morewood. Item 6, we have recommendations from Committee of the Whole for July 14 that the community grant policy be deferred to a future council meeting. I'll move that. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel French. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And then from today's Committee of the Whole, that the district engage in the community conversation to listen, learn, and capture what has been learned during the challenges COVID-19 has presented in order to build the community back in a better, more equitable, resilient, and inclusive way, and that the District of Squamish endorse the sole source of the facilitation work for the Community Conversation Project in 2020 to a maximum of $15,000. That is moved by Counsel Stoner, seconded by Counsel Herford. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Can I proceed? Not till 6. So we'll move forward to Item 9.1, Public Hearing Dates. That the following bylaws be scheduled for a public hearing on Monday, September 14, at 6:00 PM, to be held and streamed from the Squamish Activity Center Room at Brennan Park Recreation Center. This is Bylaw Number 2746-2020, Bylaw Number 2721-2020, Bylaw Number 2724-2020, Bylaw Number 2725-2020, and Bylaw Number 2726-2020. And also, Bylaw Number 2743-2020. These are all related to properties at 1,015 Laramie Road, as well as 1050 Depot Road. Counsel Herford, you moving that? Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Pattingill. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. If there's anything in the consent agenda that a counselor is in conflict with or would like to pull, now is the time to do it. Oh, Counsel Anderson. Too many buttons.
Thank you. I'd like to pull Number 8, please. That's the letter from Darlene Anderson regarding the two-way bike lane. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So a motion to approve the consent agenda with Letter Number 8 pulled. Counsel French, you're moving that? Seconded by Counsel Reese. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We'll address the letter under Correspondence Action Requested at the end of that, Counsel Anderson. I've got two more minutes, so I'm going to keep going. So under Item 11, Action Requested, the letter from P. Carlin about Nexon Newport Swimming, that this be referred to staff for follow-up and response. Moved by Counsel Reese, seconded by Counsel French. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Letter from D. Halverson, that the correspondence from D. Halverson regarding DP 539 be referred to the Director of Huni Planning for follow-up and response. Moved by Counsel French, seconded by Counsel Anderson. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. One more minute. The letter from N. Henderson regarding CATS be referred to the General Manager of Community Services for follow-up and response. Moved by Counsel Reese, seconded by Counsel Herford. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. That the letter from G. Pello around highway parking south of Brom Lake be referred to the Ministry of Transportation and Highways, as well as the RCMP. Moved by Counsel Herford, seconded by Counsel French. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. That the letter from S. McClements regarding no concern for COVID-19 health regulations be referred to the CAO for follow-up and response. Moved by Counsel Stoner, seconded by me. All those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. The letter from -- can I -- The letter from, can I keep going? M. Keitel about a community concern be referred to the Director of Community Planning for follow-up and response. Moved by Counsel Stoner, seconded by Counsel Herford. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, that, shall I stop? I've got two more. That the letter from M. Edwards be referred to the Director of Community Planning for follow-up and response. This is about Valley Cliff Coach Houses. Moved by Counsel Race, seconded by, I'll second that. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. That the letter from Mr. Reiser around cannabis store hours be referred to the Director of Planning for follow-up and response. And I would say bring that back to a Committee of the Whole. So if I move this, I'll move it with that it be referred to the Director of Community Planning for follow-up and response and brought back to the Committee of the Whole in the fall for a discussion with counsel. Seconded by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Counsel Anderson, we'll get to your letter after the public hearing. Okay. So going backwards, we are now on item seven, public hearing. Do I need to read out all of these bylaws? I do. All right, everyone, settle in. I just want to be clear that we did set the dates for the water extraction. Not that one. We have not set the dates for that one. We will not be hearing tonight on the bylaws related to Depot and Laramie Roads. They're not part of this public hearing. They have been scheduled for September, and a new date has not been set for the water extraction zoning bylaw. So stay tuned for that. I do have an opening statement that I need to read, but I want to begin by saying to all of staff that are here and supporting this effort that no matter what happens, we will stay calm and we will work out any glitches. To the community that's tuned in, this is our first public hearing by electronic means, and this is our new normal until we hit stage four of the BC pandemic response, which means widespread cure or a vaccine, and we're not there yet. So we're all going to need to get used to doing public hearings electronically. As you may have heard from the earlier motion, we are trying to enable in-public participation starting in September, and the logistics of that and ensuring that there are no more than 50 people in a room and that we can keep social distance, it's all quite tricky. But we do have three public hearings on the book for September, and we will be doing our best to ensure that that happens. But electronic participation is going to be part of the public hearing world for quite some time, and so let's see how it goes tonight. We will be patient. We will pause every 90 minutes or so to give everyone time to step away from their screens and have a bit of a break. And counsel knows that long meetings are hard to do, so you'll find that too if you're tuning in. So we will go slow, and if you have any questions whatsoever or having technical difficulties, there will be instructions on the screen. You can also chat with our host through the WebEx platform. So here we go. This public hearing is being held pursuant to the Local Government Act requirements to allow the public to present and to provide submissions to counsel respecting the proposed bylaws. Section A, rezone large greenfield properties zoned RS1 to multiple-unit residential five, RM5. This is District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Bylaw number 2731-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Multiple-Unit Residential RM5 number 2742-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Newport Ridge Parcel number 2718-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw North Crumpet Parcel number 2722-2020. Section B includes the rezone unsurveyed crown land and private land outside the growth management boundary from RS1 to park, recreational, and institutional use, P3, and resource, RE. This will include District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Unsurveyed Crown Park number 2739-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Unsurveyed Crown Resource number 2738-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Valley Cliff Resource number 2737-2020. Section C is rezoning a parcel off of Aspen Road from Multiple-Unit Residential 2 to Neighborhood Node Commercial. This includes District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Aspen East number 2740-2020, as well as District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Neighborhood Node Commercial C13 number 2734-2020, and District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Aspen Road Parcel number 2723-2020. Section E, this is to rezone an RE parcel along Highway 99 to Highway 99 Eco Tourism, C12. This includes District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Highway 99 Eco Tourism number 2727-2020. Section G, amending zoning of large C4 properties, District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw number, sorry, District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Bylaw C4 Parcels number 2733-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw 1301 to 1347 Pemberton Avenue, the Chieftain Center number 2729-2020, and District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw 1200 Hunter Place Squamish Station number 2730-2020. Section H, allocate university housing units in UH1 Zone. This includes District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment Bylaw University Area Policy Amendments number 2732-2020, and District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw University Area Amendments number 2720-2020. And lastly, Section I, rezone undeveloped C9 parcels along Highway 99 to Highway Adventure Commercial, C11. This will include District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw number 2500-2017 Amendment Bylaw Large Format Retail number 2747-2020. District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Amendment Bylaw Adventure Highway Commercial Zone, C11, 39300 Discovery Way, number 2728-2020. Everyone present will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or provide a written submission. We want to ensure that no one is discouraged or prevented from making their views known, whether speaking in favor or against the proposed OCP and zoning amendments. Please ensure that your remarks are relevant to matters contained in the proposed bylaws. Please note that this public hearing is being recorded and web-streamed live, and the recording will be posted to the district's website. Members of council may ask clarifying questions following presentations. Council is here to listen and will not debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with the public or each other during the public hearing. Up to and as part of this hearing, the public has had the opportunity to make submissions to council. If any submissions were received, they are available for review and comment and have been included as part of staff's report. Any submissions received after the agenda was published have been added to the electronic agenda and to the electronic public hearing package available on the district website. Any submissions made during the hearing can be viewed during the hearing by viewing the electronic agenda. Submissions will be uploaded by staff as they are received. I'll now ask the planning department to outline what the bylaws are that they are proposing.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brian Daly, Development and Subdivision Coordinator. With me tonight is Jesse Fletcher and Matt Gunn, both planners with community planning, and we are here tonight for the public hearing for stage one of the 2020 zoning bylaw update. The District of Squamish adopted the current official community plan on June 5th, 2018. This bylaw changed the land use designation of several properties and introduced new policies district-wide. Following the adoption of the OCP, the district initiated a comprehensive update to the zoning bylaw. The project will address four major topics, including align zoning with the official community plan, increase flexibility, improve functionality, and address gaps in the existing bylaw. The zoning bylaw update is being pursued in a three-stage approach. Stage one and stage two are overlapping components intended to be completed in 2020. Stage one of the zoning bylaw update is intended to align zoning issues with the official community plan in specific situations where current zoning could result in future outcomes that are not aligned with important official community plan objectives and policies. This stage includes a limited number of bylaw amendments, which were considered by council for first and second reading on July 7th. This is a high-level list of the bylaws we will be presenting for a public hearing this evening. Each of these sections include zoning bylaw amendments, while some other parts also may include some OCP policy language to help provide some clarity or certainty to property owners impacted by the bylaw changes. The suite of phase-one zoning bylaw amendments were given first and second reading at the July 7th special council meeting. The public hearing for the amendments associated with Section B, rezone parcels with high flood risk to agriculture, have been rescheduled to September 14th to address a technical issue related to notification, which compromise the legislative requirements for the public hearing process. The public hearing for the amendment associated with Section F, prohibit commercial water bottling, has been delayed to enable a technical amendment to the language in order to meet the intention of the bylaw. The presentation and the list above follows the order of bylaws in the staff report provided in advance of tonight's meeting. I will now pass it to Matt Gunn to present the first section.
Thank you, Brian. In this first section, staff proposed creating a new multiple-unit residential five zone, rezoning two large parcels to this RM5 zone, and introducing OCP policy to guide future land planning in these areas. The RM5 zone allows for a very low-density form of apartment drawings for neighborhood commercial, or neighborhood commercial uses. The table on the screen compares it to RS1, which is the zone proposed to replace on key parcels. In RM5, buildings have a maximum height of eight meters, which is less than the nine-meter maximum height in the existing RS1. RM5 has a very large minimum lot size of one hectare. RM5 has a 0.2 max floor area ratio, which is less than half that of the RS1, and it has a maximum unit density of 12 units per hectare. For context, I'm going to provide a general comparison of the RM5 to the Westway apartment buildings in Valley Cliff next to the Backyard Pub. This is about a two-hectare parcel with 96 units in eight buildings. For RM5, the maximum lot size is one hectare, which is approximately half the size of the Westway apartment buildings. In addition, it has a maximum density of one 12-unit building rather than the four buildings with 48 units. To be clear, RM5 is not a higher-density zone than the RS1 zone. It allows roughly the same number of dwelling units that could be built under RS1. However, the gross floor area or built space would be lower. Because that built space and road network from 12 homes would be replaced with one consolidated apartment, we'd expect a smaller development footprint and more green space in RM5. The RM5 zone is proposed for two large undeveloped parcels, which currently have RS1 zoning that allow development of single-unit dwellings. The parcels are Newport Ridge on the left and Crumpet North on the right. These are in Highlands neighborhoods and the Valley Cliff neighborhood. These are considered greenfields because they have not yet been developed, but both are privately-owned lands with considerable development potential under the existing RS1 zoning. Extensive RS1 development or single-unit development on these parcels does not align with OCP policy. The proposed bylaws are intended to address the lack of OCP alignment. The RM5 zoning is intended to increase the diversity of housing forms available across the Highlands and Valley Cliff neighborhoods by increasing an underrepresented forum while maintaining a density that mirrors adjacent development. RM5 also aligns with OCP policy by permitting neighborhood commercial which supports residents, meaning day-to-day needs close to home. The OCP identifies these two parcels for subarea planning, which I'll speak about in a moment, but there is a risk that this planning may not occur through the subdivision process. Bylaw 2731 is intended to address this risk by encouraging a rezoning application and subarea planning process on these parcels. The policy supports rezoning applications that provide the same or more residential density than possible under RS1 zone, with more density supported for complete walkable communities. It stipulates future land uses should include a range of housing forms, such as small lot single units, duplexes and triplexes that look like single homes but have more units, less townhouses and apartments. The policy also supports consideration of appropriate employment space. Encouraging subarea planning is an important approach to aligning development of the subject lines with our OCP. Subarea planning would add a comprehensive public engagement process to future development that may not occur in the current situation. Subarea planning would facilitate consideration of key values to the community and some of the things that we've heard of in response to these bylaws, such as the density and form of residential development, inventory of environmentally sensitive areas, and a denification of areas for protection, inventory of existing recreational values such as trails for preservation and enhancement, incorporation of transportation infrastructure for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit, and employment space and servicing infrastructure. A future subarea planning process for these lands is a key intention of the policy amendments included in the proposed bylaws and a critical step to achieve the vision of the 2040 OCP. A number of emails have been received from community members experiencing concerns with the proposed, expressing concerns with the proposed bylaws. I'm going to highlight a few of the major issues raised. Many individuals highlighted concern in relation to perceived significant increase in density, and just to clarify, the RM5, as I said, it roughly maintains the existing unit density, or reduces the floor area ratio, and therefore reduces comparable size of units. So it is not an increase in zoning density. Some individuals indicated that RM5 does not support a range of housing forms. In response, staff generally encourage individual development applications to provide a range of housing forms. However, we also look to create a range of housing forms across the broader neighborhoods, and the RM5 zone attempts to encourage more diversity at that level rather than at the individual development level. A number of comments were made regarding the perception that generally, single-family development is no longer supported in Squamish. And to clarify, the OCP does discourage neighborhoods that are exclusively single-unit development in favor of neighborhoods with a range of housing, but it does not expressly attempt to discourage single-family in any good way. It is simply trying to discourage single-family exclusive developments. Diverse neighborhoods are supported, which includes small and traditional lot single-units, along with duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, and apartments. Really, diversity is the goal in this case. Independent home builders also have expressed that they feel they could be excluded from future development work if single-unit development is not supported, but in response, single-unit development is supported as components of the range of housing options in addition to duplexes and triplexes, all which could be built on smaller lots by single-family home builders. Several comments also reflect concerns regarding the recreational values and trails on the properties, and this included suggestions for the district to buy the land to preserve the trails. The value of the land is in the tens of millions of dollars and would have significant impact on the district budget. Recreation values will be best supported and preserved through a subarea planning process, which is a major goal of the proposed OCP policy amendments. A number of comments also reflect concern about the lack of, the process and lack of consultation, but in response, the proposed amendments are considered important implementation steps for the 2040 Official Community Plan, which was based on a significant community consultation process. Amendments to the zoning of these parcels will ensure that goals of the OCP can be met, and more importantly, the policy amendments establish a context that could result in a subarea planning process where the community will have a legitimate opportunity to provide input and direction into the development of these parcels. A number of comments also reflected concerns about the timing related to the summer and COVID. Because there is a risk of development occurring that doesn't align with OCP goals, there is some urgency in having them considered now. The bylaws have already been delayed from the start of the pandemic, which does not show signs of abating in the near term and resolving in terms of the type of public hearing processes in there still. Other concerns that have been raised, which all of us touched on, are that RM5 is not a feasible development, which could preclude further development on the lands, that RM5 could result in higher amenity contributions in the future rezoning, that the rezoning is heavy-handed, that neighborhood commercial is undesirable, and the subject lands should not be developed. That concludes my presentation for this portion.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn.
Thanks. Staff have identified three areas of unsurveyed crown land and one area of privately-held land outside of the growth management boundary, which are currently zoned RS1, which is not in line with their OCP land use designations. The first parcel is subject The first parcel is subject to this section is a portion of unsurveyed crown land located to the east of the Valley Cliff neighborhood and comprising the northernmost part of the Swamish Chief Provincial Park. I've highlighted the appropriate, the approximate extent of the parcel in yellow on the aerial photo on the screen for context. This parcel of unsurveyed crown lands' OCP designation is Parks, Greenway Corridors, and Recreation. Staff propose rezoning it from Residential 1 RS1 to P3, Park Recreational and Institutional to better align with its land use designation. The next two parcels subject to this section are two portions of unsurveyed crown lands located to the east and northeast of the Valley Cliff neighborhood. The two yellow stars on the aerial photo on the screen show approximate location for context. These parcels of unsurveyed crown lands are designated Resource and Recreation in the OCP. Staff propose rezoning it from Residential 1 to Resource to better align it with its land use designation. Policies supporting this are outlined in the staff report in Section B. The slide shows the fourth parcel, which is proposed to be rezoned from RS1 to Resource. This is an aerial for context with the yellow star marking the approximate location of this parcel, located north of Valley Cliff and east of Lager's East. This parcel of privately-held land is designated Future Residential Neighborhood in the OCP. Staff propose rezoning it from RS1 to Resource to better align with its land use designation. I'll now pass it on to Jesse Fletcher to cover Section C.
Thank you, Brian. So in Section C, staff are proposing to create a new neighborhood node, the C-13 Zone. We propose to rezone Aspen East from multiple-unit residential 2, RM2, to C-13, introducing OCP policy at will in the event of a proposed rezoning, help guide to true development of this property. Next slide. The proposed C-13 Zone would permit a range of local-serving commercial uses and residential rental use, conditional on the form being mixed-use. The maximum density of the zone is 0.8 FAR, which is the equivalent of the existing zone, but with a minimum percentage of FAR as employment space. The proposed C-13 Zone would accommodate neighborhood nodes to accommodate all.
Ms. Fletcher, we're having trouble with your audio, so I might recommend that you turn your video off just to reduce your bandwidth a little bit.
Okay. Let's see if this works. Is this better?
Well, we'll try that.
Okay, let's try this. The parcel identified above, located along the future Pioneer Way connection between Aspen Road and Government Road, is a multi-unit residential series. The current zoning permits townhouse and new support of housing. Staff propose rezoning Aspen East to the newly-proposed C-13 Zone. This parcel is subject to an area identified as a zone on Schedule C of the OCP. The proposed C-13 Zone is also aligned with OCP objectives and policies relevant to neighborhood nodes.
I'm just going to stop you, Ms. Fletcher. Mr. Gunn?
I recognize that Ms. Fletcher is having continued audio problems, and if at any point, Mary, if you feel it would be worth switching, I can take over.
I think we might do that. Sorry, Ms. Fletcher, we're just having a really hard time with your audio. So if you could start from the beginning of this slide, Mr. Gunn, that would be great.
I will call for the presentation.
I will do that. I'm going to redo the slide. So the proposed C-13 Zone would permit a range of local-serving commercial uses and residential rental uses, conditional on the form being mixed-use. The maximum density of the zone is 0.8 floor area ratio, which is the equivalent of the existing zone, but with a minimum percentage of that floor area ratio as employment space. The proposed C-13 Zone would accommodate neighborhood node-style development. The parcel identified above, located along the future Pioneer Way connection between Aspen Road and Government Road, rezoned multiple-unit residential 2. The current zoning permits townhouse and duplex forms of housing. Staff propose rezoning Aspen East to the newly-proposed C-13 Zone. This parcel is in close proximity to an area identified as a neighborhood node on Schedule C of the OCP. The proposed C-13 Zone is also aligned with OCP objectives and policies relevant to neighborhood nodes. Staff are also proposing to include new policy in Section 9.4 of the OCP to guide future development of this property in the event of a rezoning. The policies include support for zoning, rezoning applications that provide as much or more residential density than possible under the RM2 C-13 Zone, when that density enables the development of a complete walkable community and given that there is a corresponding increase in employment space. Next slide. The new C-13 Zone and the rezoning of Aspen East align with the OCP land use designation and OCP policy regarding residential neighborhoods and requirements for neighborhood nodes. This slide highlights the relevant policy.
In Section A, we propose a new C-12 Zone, the Highway 99 Eco-Tourism Zone. We also propose the new C-12 Zone. The parcel located on the east side of Highway 99, north of the Adventure Center and south of Brandon Park is designated Conservation and Ecological Reserves in the OCP. This does not align with the existing resource zoning. This parcel is also designated Restricted Decifcation in the OCP based on identified flood hazards. Staff propose to introduce a new Highway 99 Eco-Tourism C-12 Zone and rezone this parcel from Resource to C-12. The intent of the C-12 Zone is to protect critical ecological values and services such as flood protection and stormwater management while allowing for compatible commercial recreation. The only permitted use proposed in C-12 is commercial recreation eco-tourism. As a condition of this use, no principal or accessory buildings are permitted. This C-12 Zone is aligned with the OCP land use designation while still allowing for compatible commercial recreation development opportunities for the property.
In Section G, we propose to amend the density of two large C4-zone parcels and provide OCP policy to guide redevelopment. A significant portion of downtown Swamish's zone Downtown Commercial, C4. The C4 Zone permits a mix of uses, including significant residential density with limited requirements for commercial space. Staff have identified two large parcels that are currently home to two of the district's three major grocery stores. 1301, 1347 Pemberton Ave., which is the Save On Foods parcel, and 1200 Hunter Place, which is Nestor's. Some redevelopment scenarios for these areas could result in dense residential development with significantly limited small commercial space that would not support a grocery store. Staff propose reducing the density of these sites to 0.5 floor area ratio, which is lower than the maximum floor area ratio permitted by the OCP, which is 2.8. The current zone does not designate a density for the site. The 0.5 floor area ratio follows the maximum densities identified in the C4 Zone for large parcels on Pemberton Ave. In addition to the rezoning amendment, OCP amending bylaw number 2033-2020, is proposed to enact policy to support future rezonings and/or development permit applications that provide as much or more residential density as possible under the C4 Zone, as well as consideration of increases to residential density when the density maintains the role of downtown as a core community service center by ensuring that space that could support a large format grocery store is retained. The proposed changes to the C4 Zone align with the OCP land use designation as well as with the OCP policy that relates to commercial use in the downtown area. The new OCP policy helps further reinforce existing OCP policy also.
In Section H, we propose a number of amendments to the University Area zoning. At the November 12, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting, council passed a resolution intended to address zoning in the University Area. Council identified the following priorities to be considered in the University Area zoning: allocate the majority of the remaining 450 units to central locations serviced by transit with walkable access to daily services; require inclusion of permitted uses that facilitate a complete walkable community in future development; require a full range of housing forms and tenures; allocate limited density to Parcel A and draft policy that requires development of a complete walkable community; provisions of secondary access and density that supports transit and municipal infrastructure costs; apply a climate emergency lens to future development in the subarea; draft policy that supports rezoning to add density. Staff are proposing the following amendments to the UH1 and UC1 Zones. Conditions of triplex and fourplex dwellings have been included to specify that at least one of the units needs to be placed vertically above the other. The intention behind this is to further differentiate triplex and fourplex dwellings from townhouse dwellings. Replace reference to University Campus Commercial with Neighborhood Commercial. Previously, University Campus Commercial was not a defined use. To improve clarity and flexibility in the entire zoning bylaw, an improved definition of Neighborhood Commercial is proposed. The revised definition expands the types of uses allowed under Neighborhood Commercial. Neighborhood Commercial will replace University Campus Commercial as a permitted use in UC1 and UH1. The proposal also includes to rezone a portion of the UH1 land on the campus parcel to UC1 and increase the area of UH1 zoning on the campus parcel along Mamquam Road and Healthland Way. This increased area of UH1 zoning will be a new Area 3 within the UH1 Zone. Allocate 424 dwelling units to the new Area 3 with the majority, 340, being apartment dwelling units. Allow a limited number of townhomes, 30, and the remainder being triplexes and fourplexes, 54. 10% of the dwelling units in Area 3 are restricted for residential rental tenure. To ensure the apartment units are constructed, a requirement that one townhouse, triplex, or fourplex dwelling unit is permitted for every five apartment dwellings constructed in Area 3. In Area 3, a height restriction of 10.68 meters has been added for principal buildings within 40 meters of the lot lines adjoining lots with a single-unit dwelling. The proposal also includes allocating 24 dwelling units to Parcel A and one dwelling unit to Lot 12. Policy has been added to Section 9.4 of the Official Community Plan that supports rezoning applications on Parcel A that provide higher-density forms of housing to support transit and municipal infrastructure costs. The policy also speaks to development contributing to complete walkable communities with a full range of housing forms and tenures while mitigating the environmental impacts from future development. Staff are proposing applying the Development Permit Area 3 guidelines to the University Area. The previous University Development Permit Area 11 would be repealed. Development Permit Area 11 guidelines were adopted in 2004 and developed before the university and surrounding area had been built out. Staff have been finding Development Permit Area 11 increasingly difficult to work with as the guidelines are vague and dated. Additional guidelines for triplex and fourplex housing have been added to ensure the massing and articulation of these forms of housing better reflects single-unit dwellings. The intention behind these guidelines is to allow this form of housing to better integrate into neighborhoods of predominantly single-unit development.
In Section I, staff propose the creation of a new zone, the C-11 Highway Adventure Commercial Zone. Staff also propose to rezone an undeveloped parcel along Highway 99 from C9 to C11 and also introduce an OCP amendment to clarify policy. Staff propose the creation of a Adventure Highway Commercial Zone, C11. The new zone introduces a wider range of tourist-serving uses such as alcohol, beverage, manufacturing, commercial recreation, entertainment, indoor recreation, and tourist bureau. The C-11 Zone excludes the permitted use of large-format retail in order to support directing day-to-day retail commercials to the downtown and Garibaldi Village areas. Large-format retail has the potential to meet day-to-day needs of residents while negatively impacting the use of smaller-format retailers and other commercial centers. For this reason, additional large-format retail is considered undesirable in the vicinity of the business park. To more closely align zoning on a parcel located at 39300 Discovery Way with the overall intent of the OCP, as well as with its land use designation Highway and Tourist Commercial, staff propose to rezone the property from specialized Highway Commercial, C9, to Adventure Highway Commercial, C11. In order to ensure a strong alignment with OCP policy, an amendment to OCP policy 174B is proposed. Policy 174B indicates that large-format retail outlets be directed to land designated tourist and highway commercial. The words in red on the screen is the additional language that staff are proposing. The proposed C-11 Zone better aligns with the OCP land use designation as well as with the OCP policy that relates to large-format retail. The newly amended OCP policy helps further clarify the intention of the Highway and Tourist Commercial and correct misalignments between OCP policies. I'm now going to speak to public engagement. Staff implemented this project at an informed level on the IAAP2 participation spectrum. Proposed bylaw amendments were introduced to affected landowners to solicit feedback. Feedback from those landowners was in alignment with the long-term vision, feedback from those landowners that was in alignment with the long-term vision of the OCP was incorporated into drafting the relevant bylaw amendments. Feedback received earlier on the process from affected landowners has been included in the report package this evening. District and legislative processes for engagement were followed for this application. Notices of the public hearing were published in the July 9th and 16th edition of the Swamish Sheet. Feedback and notices of the public hearing were mailed and hand-delivered to properties within 100 meters of the listed properties, and feedback from affected landowners in the public were generally not supportive of the proposed amendments. Comments received from the public have been included in the public hearing package. This concludes our presentation for the public hearing.
Thank you very much, staff, for your presentations. So, everyone present will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or provide a written submission. We want to ensure that... I already did that part. Ha-ha. I will now invite interested parties to participate electronically to speak of any of the proposed Details to participate via telephone or WebEx are displayed on the screen for those who have logged in from your computer or are watching the live stream of the meeting. Instructions are also included on the district website. In order to get on the speakers list, if you are on the telephone, please raise your hand by dialing *3 or via WebEx on computer or cell phone app by opening the participant panel and by clicking on the hand icon. It's like a little hand that looks like that. Please note that there will be a moderator who will communicate with speakers. When it is your turn to speak, you will receive a voice prompt via the telephone or a dialogue box via WebEx. Please remember to put your hand down after you have finished speaking by dialing *3 again on the telephone or by clicking on the hand icon via WebEx. We ask for your patience as we work through the speakers list in this new online format. If there are a large number of hands raised, it may take some time to get through the list. And I just had a note that there are 55 people on the WebEx platform, so if all those people raise their hand, it will take us a while to get through that list. Please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address or neighborhood and indicate which bylaw you are speaking to, to the best of your ability. Please note that the speakers will be given up to five minutes to address council in order that everyone has an opportunity to speak to council. If you've already spoken and then wish to speak again to provide more or new comments, please raise your hand once again, and once I've indicated that speakers will be offered an additional speaking opportunity. If there are still speakers who wish to address council as of 10:00 p.m., council will consider recessing the hearing to resume on Wednesday, July 29th at 6:00 p.m., or council may choose to extend the meeting, and that will be dependent, I think, on how many people are still left on the speakers list. The instructions for electronic participation will not change. So while our community gets ready to raise their hand, I'm just going to go to council and see if council has any clarifying questions before we go to the public. Counsel Reese?
Just as a matter of process, Mary Elliott, are we doing these by property or are comments coming in for any or all?
We weighed the merits of both ways and felt that we would ask each speaker to tell us which bylaw they're speaking to, but we will take comments on all of the sections of the amendments we're proposing at this time. So we're not going to go in order.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? I did see in some of our late comments, Mr. Gunn, that people were concerned about Coho Park, but I would just like to clarify through staff that these parcels wouldn't be able to develop parkland that's already designated as parkland. Is that correct?
The parcels are in the vicinity of Coho Park, the lower section of the Newport Ridge, but it is a distinct parcel separate from Coho Park. There is no proposal for development of Coho Park or rezoning or change of zoning from the district in Coho Park.
Thank you. Counsel Pangill?
Yeah, just, and I think Mr. Gunn touched on it earlier in a related question. I did see some emails about, you know, why aren't we addressing schools and parks and green space and so on in these zoning bylaws?
You, Mayor, yeah, excellent point, and those are really important considerations in planning large development properties because we want to ensure that we're taking the land development.
they -- we want to ensure that we're taking the land development context into consideration as we make those plans. The best way from staff perspective to achieve those goals is through subarea planning process. And the suite of bylaws and specifically the policy amendments, the OCP policy amendments that have been included are specifically intended to help us achieve the goal of a subarea planning process for these properties. So the values that you've highlighted are indeed important to be considered, and staff feel that the policy amendments in this suite of bylaws will help achieve consideration of those values.
Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, some of the comments suggest that the proposed rezoning potentially expedite redevelopment of these properties. Just wondering if staff can speak to the control that we have with regards to taxing of development.
Through you, Mayor. The -- right now, the lands that are -- sorry, can you clarify which properties we are talking about and which zoning amendments? Is there a specific set of properties or zoning amendments that you are referencing?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification or the request of clarification. It's specifically the RS1 to RM5.
Thank you. Yeah, through you, Mayor. Right now, those properties have RS1 zoning. The change to RM5 zoning in no way expedites or increases the speed at which those parcels could be developed. It is a change of zoning, a change of use, but it does not affect the development process in terms of implementing that zoning or either zoning. What it does do, though, is adds OCP policy, one of the bylaws, adds OCP's policy that, as I stated, is intended to incentivize the completion of a subarea plan. That planning process does take some time, and so if the landowners went down that road to complete subarea planning, I would say that would more likely delay or slow the development process to ensure that process, which involves public consultation, community input, background research, is available for that process. And so I would say the suite of bylaws either does not change the development process speed or is likely to lead to some delay in the development of those laws.
All right. Counsel Horford.
Thank you. I've got two pieces here, I think. The OCP land use designation and how that interplays with zoning has been a big part of the learning process for me here. And I was curious if you could speak to zoning as a tool to get, in general, to get to more in line with those land use designations. Because those land use designations don't directly prescribe a zone in general. So just, can you sort of try to put that together a little more for me and the folks of them?
Absolutely. And through you, Mayor, I think it is a good point of clarification and one that is probably not well-understood in the general population. Within our regulatory framework, the OCP establishes a set of land use designations that apply to all lands. These are broad categories, and so for both these properties, those broad categories that the land use designation applies to is residential neighborhoods. So both properties are considered as residential neighborhoods. That supports a range of development that you would imagine in a residential area. It's not specifically just residential, it's the things that might come along with a residential neighborhood, and so neighborhood commercial is something that would not be surprising, schools, parks. All those uses are encapsulated under that broad, high-level land use designation. And then the zoning is a lower, more regulatory tool that tries to implement the goals of the OCP. And so underneath residential neighborhoods, there's a whole range of zones that would be appropriate to apply to a property. And that could range from RS1, single-family development, through apartments, townhouses, whatever the potential residential form you'd imagine that would fit within a neighborhood. Those will all be subsets of zoning that would fall underneath the designation. But one thing to note is that the zoning is attempting to implement that high-level vision of land use designations, but it's also attempting to implement a range of policies in the OCP. And so that the zoning has to align with the land use designation policy, but it also is a chance to try and implement those policies in the OCP. And so, you know, policies around having a walkable community, a range of housing forms, protecting trail networks, those are all goals that we want to try and achieve in placing zoning on the land within the OCP land use designation.
Thank you. That was very helpful. On the C11 property, I have a two-part question there. Is that the only property that is currently zoned C that would be zoned C11 if successful?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that is the only property that would be zoned C11 if successful. That is a new zone that has been drafted for that successful.
Thank you. In relation to the rest of the business park, which we've put a priority on rezoning, I'm just wondering why staff felt this piece was urgent enough to be pulled out, given that we're going to be exploring it without the rest of the business park to sort of compare and contrast.
Through you, Mayor. Great question. There's two things that I would say to that. First, in terms of the difference between the commercial property, the commercially-designated property that is proposed for C11 zoning and the rest of the business park, the land use designation, which we were just speaking about, is actually quite different between the vast majority of the business park and that property. The majority of the business park has either intensive industrial or industrial business land use designations, and so that clear intent is to try and drive industrial businesses that are compatible with industrial businesses in the business park area. Along the highway, the OCP identifies the strip of parcels as having a different land use designation, a commercial designation, because of its proximity to the highway and the opportunity to provide easy access, commercial land. It's a fairly valuable commodity to have that level of access to the highway, and so there's a different set of -- a different land designation and a different expected set of uses. And those commercial uses aren't really -- well, we are talking about commercial uses in the Business Park zoning update. The primary focus of the Business Park zoning update is to implement the OCP policy around attempting to ensure the business park is preserved for industrial uses. And so there's a clear distinction on the role that the different lands play in the Business Park zoning update. And in terms of the reason that that parcel is being addressed at this time, the reason is that that parcel currently has zoning that would allow a large-format retailer, big-box store to be developed on a site. It's an item that staff feel needs to be addressed, but we don't necessarily know that that type of development is aligned with our long-term vision of how commercial activity in the community is -- would be appropriate. And so we want to remove the possibility of that large-format or big-box store being filter-initiated, and so it's a high priority to change that zoning at this time.
All right. Counsel, I do want to get to the public. Are there -- are we good to go? And you will have another opportunity to ask questions, so that's not a problem. So, to the public, *3, if you're on the telephone, you want to raise your hand, or go to the panel page and raise your hand on WebEx. I'll turn it over to the moderator for our first speaker.
Okay, good evening. We have been called to an online caller. Heather Dunham, you are our next speaker. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
May need to take your phone off mute, or... There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Heather, go ahead.
Oh, hi, thank you. It's Heather Dunham here, reside at 1005 J Crescent, Swamish. I'm speaking regarding bylaws 2722, 2731, and 2742. Mayor and counsel, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I think you're well aware that I feel very strongly opposed to the district-led rezoning of the two large greenfield parcels identified as Newport Ridge parcel in the Garibaldi Highlands and the North Crumpet parcel in Valley Cliff. I am a resident of the Thunderbird Creek neighborhood, which lies directly adjacent to the Newport Ridge parcel. And since council passed first and second reading of the zoning bylaws to rezone these two parcels from RS1 to RM5, I have heard so much confusion in our community as to why these parcels are being rezoned. So I would like to take this opportunity to try and clarify some of the things that I've been hearing in my community. First of all, this is a district-led rezoning initiative and not developer-led. I've been hearing a lot of people speak about why the landowners are rezoning their property. Well, they're not. The district is rezoning these properties for the landowners, whether they want the rezoning or not. There has been little to no consultation or collaboration with the landowners on these rezoning initiatives, or there certainly hasn't been any consultation or collaboration with the committee on this rezoning initiative. I think we can all agree that we've seen lots of correspondence coming into the district in the last couple of days. There's a lot of confusion, and I think that lends to a lack of consultation. The district has confirmed that the downzoning of both of these parcels from RS1 to RM5 is to align the zoning with the OCP. I'd like to point out that the current RS1 zone actually permits three forms of housing, one being a single-family home, of course, second being a secondary suite, and third being a carriage house. And the new proposed RM5 zone permits only one form of housing, and that is low-rise, large, low-rise apartments. And the density in the prescribed zone of RM5 actually equates to about an 1,800 square foot apartment, 12 of these per hectare, as Mr. Gunn has pointed out tonight. We can all do the math, at the current selling price of condos in Swamish, probably about 600 bucks a square foot, these are not going to be affordable apartments. And just looking at the OCP policy objectives, some of the objectives state that new development should provide a range and mix of housing options for residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities, and achieve a diverse and inclusive mix of housing forms, unit types, sizes, tenures, and price options within each development and neighborhood. The RM5 zone does not align with OCP policy. The RM5 zone permits only one form of housing. It does not provide a range and mix of housing options for residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities. It does not achieve a diverse and inclusive mix of housing forms, unit types, tenures, and price options within each neighborhood. The current RS1 zone is actually more closely aligned with the OCP in that it provides three forms of housing options. District staff have also confirmed that developing to the RM5 zone is not favorable to the district and that the district -- the district's council is moving away from single-family home uses in Swamish. I just want to reiterate to members of council and the mayor that there will be many unintended consequences to the RM5 zone and removing single-family uses in our community. First of all, the price of single-family lots in Swamish will escalate incredibly.
You have 30 seconds, Ms. Dunham.
Will be out of reach for many potential homeowners. Current homeowners will see a rise in annual property taxes for their homes, which could push many people out of our community. The only form of housing allowable under RM5 zone will not be affordable. Many local home builders will be competing for fewer projects and will have to leave the community to seek employment. Moving commercial uses out of the downtown core and into residential neighborhoods will be detrimental to small businesses and for the revitalizing of the town.
I'll need you to just wrap up, please.
In short, I urge mayor and counsel to stop this rezoning, to work collaboratively with the landowners, to put together comprehensive plans for both of these parcels that will be good for Swamish, good for all of our members of the community, that include lots of public consultation, that's going to be good for the future of Swamish. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Ms. Dunham. And if you do want to speak again, you can, once we make our way through the speakers' list.
Thank you very much.
Our next caller is Amy Fats. Ms. Fats, if you could, please state your name, address, and to which bylaw you would like to speak. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Amy Fats, and I live in Garibaldi Highlands, and I'll be speaking to Part A, rezoned large greenfield properties zoned RS1 to multiple-unit residential RM5, North Crumpet, and Newport Ridge. I'm speaking as one of the affected landowners. My father and I own the parcel described as North Crumpet, which is approximately 300 acres. But I'm also speaking as a local business owner and resident. It's clear to me that the district has done a poor job of providing the necessary information to the public during this process. From reading the submitted correspondence or the comments on social media, though most are aligned in their opposition to this rezoning, many don't understand who is leading the process or what the RM5 zone would actually look like. People are asking why they haven't seen development plans yet and how rezoning can go through so quickly and without comprehensive public consultation. In fact, the district is in charge of this rezoning. Not only hasn't the community been consulted, neither have the landowners. RM5 allows for low-rise, low-density apartments, a max of 12 units per hectare, and neighborhood commercial. Since the district is leading this rezoning and not the landowner, there are no development plans yet. We, as a company, have now started our own subarea planning process, but it will take some time to complete. We did not have near-term plans to build on the site at the time the district told us they intended to rezone it, as we knew it would require a subarea plan and consultation. The district has done the bare minimum through this process. Least number of meetings to pass the first and second reading, the least amount of notice of the public hearing, the least amount of public consultation, and the least amount of information shared with the public. There is no way a developer could get away with that, so why aren't we holding the district to the same standard? District staff continue to convey that the current OCP policies are not strong enough to prohibit an RS1 subdivision on our property. However, to me, it seems very clear in the OCP that this parcel requires a subarea plan adopted by council before any development approvals are issued. From Page 34 of the OCP, Section 9.4B, requires subarea plans adopted by council before any new residential or commercial development approvals are issued on properties identified for future subarea plans on Schedule C. Our land is clearly highlighted on Schedule C. We support the vision of the OCP and have been very clear of the intention to embark on a subarea plan process, and that 100% single-family subdivision was not intended for the property. It is also my understanding that the approving officer could reject an RS1 subdivision application based on current OCP policy and community interest, so it's unclear why the district feels this rezoning is necessary. We've also been told, as have other community members, that the new RM5 zone has been created to better align with OCP policies, most importantly, provide a range and mix of housing options, and achieve diverse and inclusive mix of housing forms. However, RM5 zone allows for one type of housing or commercial. On July 6, the Swamish reporter included the following in an article. "District staff says the proposed RM5 zone is more suitable for it includes a wide range of housing as well as institutional uses such as schools, places of worship, parks, and open spaces, and mixed residential and commercial buildings." But the only two uses in the proposed RM5 zone are A, apartment dwelling, and B, neighborhood commercial. What I still don't understand is how does a zone that allows What I still don't understand is how does a zone that allows for one type of housing better align with the OCP than RS1? And how are members of our community being told by staff that this zone offers a range of housing and institutional uses when in fact it doesn't? It's become apparent to me that the district wants to completely remove single-family zoning as an option in our community. I was aware of the desire to densify downtown and add pockets of infill density to many other neighborhoods. What I wasn't aware of is the desire to get rid of any new single-family development altogether. On July 26, 2017, then-Councillor Elliott was quoted in the Squamish chief regarding her vote against the rezoning to allow for a 35-lot, single-family subdivision in Brackendale. From the chief, "Only Councillor Karen Elliott did not support the rezoning," saying,[646.51][646.54]"The era of single-family homes should be behind us." Mayor Elliott has seemingly made her mind up about the outcome of this rezoning proposal already.
30 seconds, Ms. Fast.
I can only hope the rest of council will listen to the public, and at the very least postpone your vote until more public consultation can take place. Or leave the zoning as it is, and we'll continue working on our subarea plan, which is required by your current OCP. And per the OCP, we will ensure preparation of a subarea plan includes comprehensive public engagement. We want to work collaboratively with the district and the community. We want to create a subarea plan that meets the needs of the community and that people can support. So far in this process, we have not felt the same from the district of Swamish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next caller is Kelly Delaney. Kelly, if you could please state your name and address and to which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Kelly Delaney, you can hear me?
Yes, you can.
I live at 38558 Westway Avenue in Valley Cliff, and I'm opposed to the Schedule A bylaw or 2731, the rezoning of North Crumpet and Newport Ridge. I'll make this as brief as I can. I couldn't agree more with Amy or Heather. I don't think the top of the hill is the best place for condos. I don't quite understand where the municipality is going with this. There was very little public consultation. If a developer is to develop an area, it takes months upon months, and tens of thousands of dollars, and a lot of people to make sure that that development is good for our community. I believe the district has failed this on us, and I believe that it definitely, at the least, should be postponed and not be pushed through. I couldn't agree more that a developer should be left to create a subarea plan that can be approved by the municipality and approved by the residents living in the community. For the last time I checked, we don't live in a fascist society. We live in a society where we all work together, where the voices of many create change, not just the voices of a few. I also don't believe that rezoning this will do anything good for the communities that they're in. Building condos nestled in amongst single-family homes is not a good idea. Build condos in densification in the areas in town, such as downtown, where we voted for them to be. I've participated in the creating of the OCP. I was at the Brandon Center for the public consultations, and I agree with it completely. Densification is the way to go. I voted for it. I also voted for infrastructure upgrades. I have seen some of them around town. The significant ones have been forked out by the developers themselves. I would definitely like to see the municipality taking their time to look a little bit harder at what's needed in the infrastructure before we go ahead and rezone these communities. I would also like to end with a question. Now, I'm sure that nobody can answer this, but currently, until the end of the meeting, but if these two plots of land get rezoned, what does that do in regards to a tax base? Does the tax increase on the property, or does it decrease? I'm not too sure, but I would really like to find that out. And I also would like to see more in the bylaw stipulating not only what dwellings can be on the property, but also how the area is developed. And that's where it should be left up to a subarea plan, so we can all benefit. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Our next caller is Bob Fast. Mr. Fast, please state your name and address and to which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Okay, am I heard?
Yes, you are.
My name is Bob Fast. I live at Crumpet Woods. I am one of the owners at Crumpet North. And I'd like to speak to the single-family home issue. You know, most people strive to get to a single-family home because it lends itself to the kids running around the backyard, maybe there's a garden in the yard. And it's kind of sort of living the dream that everybody strives to get to. So I'm not sure where we need all the condos or all of this. We've said very clearly that we will do a subarea plan, and all those products, all those housing types, will be part of that. I don't know how many more times we need to say that. One issue I have is with, because I've been in construction supply for many, many years, I have an issue with the local builders and the fact that they're now going to seek other employment out of the Squamish area. You know, one of the letters we read today, it said, "We've been working in West Van and Whistler for all these years. Now finally, Squamish has got some areas of business for them that they can finally get off the road and work more often in Squamish than in West Van or Whistler." And that is a large point, because these small business people, they not only hire a lot of folks in the community, but they also have their own suppliers in the community who also have a large number of voters and employees. So this is to be considered very strongly. The OCP and this RM5, which I have not seen anywhere in Squamish, and it baffles me why planning would put us into this zoning. It almost seems like they're trying to sterilize our land while they figure out what's going on. Well, you know what? That is not acceptable. We will go and do a subarea plan, just like we promised to do in 2017, when David Rittberg was working with us. So again, we will do that. It will take time, but putting us off into this silly zoning is like putting us in the penalty box, and it's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fast. And I'll just ask those that have already spoken to just go back into the panelists, participant panel, sorry, and lower their hand, just so that helps our moderator manage the speakers list a little bit better. Once we've been through everyone, we will call again if people want to speak again. But if you've already spoken, if you could take your hand down, that would be great. Go ahead, moderator.
Our next caller is Tracy Saxby. Tracy, if you could please state your name and address and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tracy Saxby. I live in Valley Cliff. I am speaking on behalf of MyC2Sky this evening. We have sent two submissions to Mayor and Council regarding the proposed zoning bylaw update. One of them deals specifically with concerns around process and the lack of public notice. We have recommended that in future, the district needs to host some form of public information session prior to a public hearing to allow the community to better understand and have time to meaningfully respond to these kind of processes. I would like to ask a clarifying question of staff, if I may, related to bylaw B, rezon unserved crown land and private land outside of growth management boundaries. I wanted to get clarity on the OCP's land use, where it says that the land, particularly for Figure B2, the OCP land use is specified as resource and recreation. And so this unserved crown land is being rezoned from RS1 to resource, which I think is a good thing, but we're not sure. Because when you read through what the resource zone means, there's not actually any mention of recreation in that zone. So I was curious to get clarity from staff on their rationale for rezoning this, if it's possible to get an answer.
We can get you that clarity, but I'm wondering if you have any further comments, and then I can go to staff at the end of your comments to answer your questions.
Yeah, I think that's really all we need. We sort of replied or like wrote everything in our submission.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Saxby. Mr. Gunn, can you provide some clarity for Ms. Saxby on her question?
Yeah, great question. The land use designation for that parcel is indeed resource and recreation. The zoning, proposed resource zoning, does not include a permitted use of recreation, but that is because we don't include recreation as a permitted use in any of the zones. We don't zone for pultkeen or bikin or hiking. They're assumed permitted usage is based on the land ownership, so crown land, which this is, has its own set of provincial regulations that allow access to the land, and those allow you to recreate on crown land, and we don't get to the level of regulating those activities in the zoning bylaw. But they are allowed. It's just we don't regulate them.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Ms. Saxby, did you have a follow-up? Cut you off. All right, we'll take one more speaker, and then we'll recess for 15 minutes, just to give everyone a chance to stand up and stretch their legs and refresh their water, or tea, or coffee.
Our next caller is Yee Kai Saw. Mr. and Mrs. Saw, you are our speaker. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have applied to address council. Please go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great. Mayor Elliott, council members, and staff, thank you for this opportunity to contribute to the public hearing. My name is Yee Kai Saw, I'm second story. And I'm actually the Development Manager of the Holborn Group. Holborn owns Newport Ridge site, which is subject to Schedule A and J after zoning bylaw update, of which I will be speaking to. So Site Note Schedule J was actually removed from today's agenda, it was rejected by council during the July 7 council meeting. With respect to Schedule A, bylaw number 2331, 2020, of the zoning amendment to rezon greenfield sites from RS1 to RM5, we fully understand and respect that it is council's desire to move away from large, single-family home subdivisions into our complete walkable neighborhoods. We also understand that the overarching goal of this update is to encourage Holborn and other developers to work closely with staff to achieve more comprehensive mixed-use communities through a zoning process. We enjoy working with the district staff and look forward to recommending them towards this goal. However, I would like to point out that the RM5 zoning actually moves further away from the OCP objectives, as it stipulates a relatively esoteric form of development of low-density, two-story apartment buildings with each commercial units. On the other hand, RS1 allows the flexibility to incorporate a variety of housing types such as microhomes, renders small-to-little, single-family homes falling into the opportunity rental suite. A zoning change RM5, although moves away from a single-family home neighborhood, does not concurrently promote a sufficiently diverse and inclusive community, or potentially right next to rental housing options. Add this note that at the district council meeting, council rejected staff Schedule J recommendation, which was the voluntary community amenity contribution policy update. Staff's recommendation was the CAC calculations of the parcels affected by the change in zoning was to be calculated off original zoning, rather than the zoning implemented through the district letting zoning exercise. In essence, what this will do is increase developers' cost base in sort of rezoned form of development. For our site, Newport Ridge, it would fall at a multiple residential or mixed-use rezoning of 50 units or more. Based on the current policy, the CAC would be calculated based on new-for-sale residential gross floor air or GFA instead of density. We completed some internal case studies for our Newport Ridge site, comparing the for sale residential GFA differences between the RS1 and the RM5 zoning. The base GFA for RM5 is expected to be lower than RS1 by 250,000 square feet, and upwards of 490,000 square feet. If our CAC calculations are based on the new RM5 zoning, this would translate to an additional $1.9 million to $3.7 million of additional new CACs under our application due to the loss of GFA going from RS1 to RM5. If the application does not include any affordable housing, this range increases to $5.7 million to $11 million due to the GFA decrease from the zoning change to RM5. Additional details of how we landed in those calculations have been included in a letter to Mayor and Council, hopefully reviewed. This is highly concerning, as we have already increased due to heightened building code and environmental requirements. We're also facing an increase in Squamish development cost charges on top of land holding costs due to longer development timelines for large rezoning sites like ours. Unfortunately, if this policy, Schedule J, is rejected, the additional required CACs, along with the other increases, will only translate to higher housing costs for the end user, and pose as an additional obstacle to developers from being able to meet the OCP objectives in the applications, which is to deliver a range and mix of housing options for residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities. The rejection of staff's Schedule J recommendation actually encourages the development of complete communities instead of encouraging it. Therefore, we strongly encourage council to reconsider staff's recommendation, adopt Schedule J's update to calculate CACs based on the original zoning of the affected parcels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments, Yee Kai. Okay, everyone, we're going to take a recess. It is currently 7:17. We will reconvene at 7:30. Okay, we are back in our public hearing. The instructions are on the screen, star 8, if you would like to raise your hand on the telephone, star 3, sorry, not 8, star 3. And then in the panel, you can raise your hand. It's the little icon that looks like that. And just a reminder to folks who are joining us on the WebEx app, no one has turned on their video, but you do have that ability if you would like to be seen and see us and be part of the live stream. You're certainly welcome to do that. I was reflecting on the break that one of the benefits of an electronic hearing, for those of you that are at home, is the fact that you are at home and have access to your fridge and comfy chairs, and that is not the case at City Hall, although I did bring chocolate. All right, so we will move on to our speakers list.
Okay, Isaac Deel. Isaac, you are our next speaker. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead. Isaac, are you there?
It's on mute right now.
Hi, Isaac, can you go ahead? Okay, Isaac, we'll come back to you. Our next speaker is Herbert Vesely. Herbert, you are our next speaker. Please state your name, address, and to which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Thank you. It's Herbert Vesely, 38626 Cherry Drive in Valley Cliff. First, on a point of order, I cannot see on my screen what you people are looking at City Hall, or at your home. I wasn't supposed to see the presentation by staff on my screen. I only see the people in present, but I don't see a screen.
Um, the, there was a presentation earlier by staff?
Yes. Matt Gunn, for example, didn't he talk about, uh, things that he showed on the screen?
Yes.
I, I didn't see that.
Mr. Gunn?
How was I sup, how was I supposed to see that?
Uh, can I ask what platform you're using? Are you on a home computer or a phone?
A, a home computer, Windows 10, and I have the software installed, uh, by this particular company, Cisco.
Okay, there are a few different settings for viewing, um, and, uh, in one setting you see a number of people, and in other settings you can see the people that talk and the, um, the, uh, this, what's it, the display on PowerPoint.
Really?
Um, it, it, it's one of the settings that, that you're using, and I might ask, uh, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that because it might be better to have someone from, uh, Legislative Services who are familiar with the platform to help you, um, and you'll be able to find direction on exactly where the button is to, to achieve that.
Okay, thank you. I've just looked at all the buttons, I can't see it. So if I may speak to the Crumpet North, uh, parcel develop, um, issue, um, I believe there was really not enough information to make an informed decision. Uh, the proposed RM5 zoning permits low-rise apartment, uh, buildings, but it doesn't say what else it might permit. Uh, other, um, apartment zoning such as RM1 permits, uh, two-unit dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and rooming houses and so on. These don't mention it in any of the material I have, was able to get my hands on, so I assume nothing else is allowed except a two-story apartment unit with 12 apartments and commercial development. If that's the case, then, uh, I agree that the density is very similar to RS1, but the RS1 zone allows either a coach house or, uh, a suite in the, in the, uh, in a single-family house. So actually, you have a much higher population density, uh, in the RS1 than you would have in your proposed zoning. So I don't know, uh, that that's your objective, is to reduce, uh, the population density. Um, I believe to introduce, um, a new RM5 zone without, um, a public information meeting is, is, is wrong. Um, I think the planner, Mr. Gunn, mentioned an urgency, but the owner for this parcel that I'm speaking to offered a, a four-year, uh, undertaking, uh, by a covenant on, on a property that he would not develop for four years. So you can have lots of time to resolve the zoning issue. I don't know why, in, in the earlier presentation by Bob Fast, it wasn't mentioned, but the, the planner knows about it because he's, was quoted as saying so. Um, I, I don't believe that this low density, in fact, is the final word. Developers often negotiate higher density in exchange for public amenity packages. So for example, uh, you know, we've got a lift bridge, or we're getting a lift bridge over the blind channel as a public amenity package, as a trade-off for something or other developer got, and this is going to cost us a hundred and seventy to three hundred thousand a year to maintain, according to the chief, June 14th article. So I can see something similar happening here. This is not the final word, but the starting point. Um, the single access concerns me a great deal. You can only get to our area from Clark Drive with one access, one intersection with Highway 99. You ought not to increase, uh, the dense, sorry, you're not, uh, to increase the population here without giving us a second, uh, access. That should be part of, of your proposal. The second access logically would be to Fidge Drive. Uh, if the plan is simply to bring the zoning in line with the official community plan, why don't we consider changing the official community plan instead, bringing it in line with, uh, the, the zoning that you have there, which is RS1? Uh, please consider stopping this now, bring it forward to a public information meeting when it is the right time, such as the conclusion of a pandemic, so we can all walk around, look at your displays, and have a chat. Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker?
Our next caller is Isaac Fio. Isaac, you're, uh, up. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have five minutes to address council. Please go ahead. Isaac? Hi, Isaac?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Isaac, you're up.
My apologies, minor technical difficulties. Um, my name is Isaac Bell. I'm calling on behalf of Anson Properties. Uh, we are representing the owner of the land, uh, located at 39300 Discovery Way, uh, which are subject to the proposed rezoning of C9 Highway Commercial to C11, um, Adventure Commercial, Bylaw 2728, comma, 2020. Your worship, the mayor, honorable members of council, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Um, I'm calling because we're deeply concerned about the proposed rezoning, um, of our property and the process of its implementation. In our opinion, the zoning that's put forward is not workable for development, nor does it holistically reflect the District, District of Swamish's strategic plan, OCP, and pending zoning bylaw update. The proposed zoning is very restrictive and does not promotion, uh, promote the creation of a viable, vibrant, and cohesive development, nor does it fully consider the context of this specific property. We fully support the intent to foster employment creation, but to do so, we need a zoning that meets the needs of business, employers, employees, and customers, while we also need to be mindful of the supporting services and amenities. A thoughtful and cohesive zoning will address this, it will promote connectivity, reduce vehicle trips, and serve the community and greater region. By giving second reasoning to this bylaw, council has mitigated the perceived risk associated with this property, and I think we've got a great opportunity to use the momentum of the process we're currently in, to use the existing, the proposed zoning as a framework to develop a workable and complete zoning that allows us to create and achieve a shared vision. We can do this in a timely and efficient manager, manner, through this council-led process. We humbly ask council for the opportunity to engage, discuss, and collaborate to create a shared vision for this property. Firmly believe that the only path forward on this is together. We ask council to perform a motion to defer the implementation of this bylaw, allowing us the opportunity to collaborate with staff and council and achieve a workable zoning. Leave you with a quote from the late poet, Mattie Stepanek, "Unity is strength. When there's teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." Thank you very much for your consideration. I'll remain available for the rest of the meeting, uh, if anyone has any questions or inquiries. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac.
Our next caller is Cheryl Weeks. Cheryl, please state your name, address, and to which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Hi, Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I live down at Freeville Crescent. I would like to speak to the North Crumpet and Newport Ridge.
Cheryl, it sounds like you've got two speakers or two microphones on, so if you're watching the live stream, maybe you could mute something? If you've got two.
Hang on one second.
Yeah, thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Is that any better?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'd like to speak to the North Crumpet and Newport Ridge rezoning. Um, I, again, I live at Freeville Crescent here. Um, the previous speakers have been pretty idle, but actually to learn that the owners own land opposed to it because of the way it was pushed through so urgently. Um, and then the Surrey developer brought up some good points, uh, highlighting that it's council driving this, uh, and the costs associated with it. Um, some of the sort of issues I take with it is that obviously there's going to be development within Swamish, but, uh, one of the biggest things here is we're doing a rezoning for apartments and commercial, and I think we're robbing our downtown core and all our small business owners. Um, I don't think there's a need for any commercial in the Highlands area and so on. Uh, I think we're really taking away from a lot of our, our local residents who own businesses who are already struggling, and I, I, I don't really understand why we would do that, create our own competitor. Uh, the second concern, uh, I, obviously my son goes to the elementary school in the area. Um, there's a complete lack of infrastructure, and I realize that, uh, things are built over time and that if it was changed, uh, there wouldn't be development for a long period of time. However, I'm wondering if there's any consideration to, um, other, um, other things being put in place? Like, there's a complete lack of sidewalks in the Highlands, and you want to make it a walkable community by adding apartments and adding, uh, more people, and, uh, kids can't walk to school without cars honking at them and so on. My third issue that I take with it is the complete lack of consultation with, not just the people that live up here, including myself, but the city as a whole. It just seems to have been rushed. Um, fourthly, it goes against the OCP.
It's my fault.
Somebody's not muted. Um, it goes against our, the, the entire plan to Swamish. There's two people speaking.
Hold on a second, Cheryl. Do we have everyone muted that we need muted?
Mm-hmm. Please speak as speaker.
Counselor, counselor, counselor.
I can hear Mr. Vesely.
Staff, he's the main problem. Staff.
I think the host might be able to mute him.
Yep, we've got that now. Okay, go ahead, Cheryl.
Did that work?
Yep, that worked. You can go ahead, Cheryl. Sorry about that.
And we can't hear you at the moment, just through your web.
Oh. Melissa, did you mute the district? Can you hear me now? Okay. Cheryl, can you hear me?
I can definitely hear you.
Okay, thanks for your patience.
Yep, that's okay. Um, really, uh, as a resident up here and echoing a lot of what the previous people have said, I'm, I'm just not sure why, uh, Swamish a long time ago was considered a, a bedroom community, and we were trying to avoid that, and now we're creating our own competition amongst ourselves. And it just seems, uh, like the complete lack of consultation, the lack of infrastructure to support something like this, and I don't mean, um, you know, sewage and water and things like that, I mean, just a neighborhood that is able to support additional residence. The local elementary school, have they been consulted with the school board? Like, there's two portables going up. Um, and then the loss of, uh, I believe it's called Merrill Park, and I, I don't know for sure if that's included in the development plan, but that's a huge loss for our area in which, uh, people mountain bike, people hike, or we walk our dogs, our kids play in there. Um, and then I won't even get into being overrun already in the summer months as far as mountain bikers and things go for coming up into our neighborhood. We can barely deal with that. To add the Chima Land being, uh, allotted, uh, rock quarry, so are we going to start seeing trucks coming through? And again, I go back to the ingress and egress. There's one road in and one road out, and I just don't think that rushiness, I think it's short-sighted, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Our next caller is Chessie Knight. Chessie, could you please state your name, address, and to which bylaw you would like to speak to? You have five minutes to address council. Just give it one more. Okay, you're good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, this is a question to Mayor and Council, uh, sorry, Chessie Knight, uh, President of 99 Trials Association. I live on Government Road. And this is a question to Mayor and Council and Bob and Amy Fast, if you're still on. Um, my apologies, this question is not directed at you, um, but if you feel like you need to step in, please feel free. Um, to, to Mayor Elliott, Mayor Elliott and Council, there is, uh, quite the rumor going around town that, uh, the North Crumpet parcel will be clear-cut, and if you guys could speak to whatever information you have on that, um, and if it's in some way retaliation because the fast are frustrated with, uh, this, this district imposed zoning, I don't know, but if council could speak to that, I think it would do a lot to, um, address community, community concerns about this, this rumor of clear-cutting, um, North Crumpet without any of us really being able to participate in, in what that would look like.
Uh, Chessie, council's job is to listen and, um, so we can, you can certainly pose the question, um, but we're speaking to the bylaws in front of us this evening.
Okay, I appreciate it, Mayor Elliott, so maybe just, um, i- if we can somehow log that, that that might be an issue that we could all, um, circle back to at some point through this process.
Yeah, staff are making notes and are logging questions and, uh, and comments.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matt Blackman, you are the next speaker. Please state your name, address, and to which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
You know what? I knew she would do that.
Okay, that was still Chessie, so we need to...
Hi, Matt Blackman. Okay, um, yeah, my name is Matt Blackman. I live at 40743 Thunderbird Lane. Um, we are not close to any of the properties, uh, in contention, and I'm talking about Section 8, the RM, RS1 to RM5 zoning, uh, but I do have concerns, a number of concerns with that development. Um, I, I see there seems to be a lot of confusion with, uh, you know, from various members of council. I actually did talk to a number of members of council, including the mayor, by either email or phone call, and there, I mean, I was getting feedback saying that we need to reduce taxes, we need to increase affordability, a- and, and we need to increase density to do that, and this development doesn't under that, as I see it. So I don't quite understand how we are going to achieve those goals by switching from RS1 to RM5. Um, and if somebody could explain that to me at some point, that'd be great. The concern is that I, and I've talked to a number of people in the real estate profession, that that's only an opener, that then it would motivate developers to come to table with, uh, council and negotiate a package that would work on each individual property and, and the commensurate CACs. So again, I don't know if that's part of the process, but as it stands right now, on the face of it, by taking 12, five lots per acre, which is standard RS1, uh, concentration or zoning density, and, and going to five, uh, apartments per acre, basically, which is what the RM5 zoning would achieve, I don't quite understand what you're doing, except you're making, you're, you're taking housing out of the, the, the equation and making some, for some very expensive apartments. Um, the other thing about that is that houses typically, and houses being single-family, duplex, triplex, with the possibility of suites and carriage houses, are, are de-simple, which means I hold the title exclusively. I don't have to share it with anybody, I don't have to worry about a strata council. By going to RM5, you're basically going to be changing all those properties to strata title, which then means I have to pay strata fees, I have to deal with the strata council, they can fine me, there's all kinds of, I have to pay contingencies if there's expenses involved. So again, I don't quite understand most of the rationale for that, given that it's going to not increase our affordability, but decrease it. Um, so basically, under RS1 zoning, you can have a single-family, as I said, a duplex zoning, triplex, again, because in each RS1 subdivision, you're allowed a number of duplexes. So again, you're going to have a, a greater diversity of housing types versus what this RM5 zoning allows. Um, you're also going to, as other people have said, you, you're going to chase away, I used to be a builder, and the small builder is the, the, I mean, he is essential to the success of any community because he listens to the community, he hires people from the community to work, he, he buys his materials from the community, and by switching to an RM5 designation, as I see it, you're going to encourage the larger companies... R M five designation, as I see it, you're going to encourage the larger companies like the Boses, like the Polygons, who do a lot of their hiring elsewhere in Vancouver, Burnaby, and they bring their trades up here, yes, they do some hiring here, but it's restricted. So again, I, I don't, I don't quite get the rationale for that because it's going to certainly, um, embolden and, and encourage the large companies who already have staff in place. They don't have to hire people locally necessarily. Um, yeah, I, I can't stress enough that in talking to the people I talk to, the councilors and the mayor I talk to, I'm getting the feedback that they're, we're trying to increase density to reduce taxes and increase affordability. This does not, this does not accomplish that at all. In fact, it does the exact reverse. So again, I just don't understand the rationale. Um, you know, I'm just reading from notes. Uh, in the last commuter survey that I saw, and again, it appeared in the chief about a year ago or so, if I remember, they said that more than fifty percent of, of workers who reside in Squamish have to commute more than fifteen minutes to work. And this is only going to increase that because you're just going to increase the bedroom community commuter mentality. That's, that's all you're accomplishing. Um, the other, the other challenge is that the R M five zoning, as I see it, has some commercial and mostly apartment. I don't know why anyone would buy something or, or build something if they own the land, why would they downgrade that to do something that's going to be a lower value, a lower essential value like RS one? So again, you're pretty much ensuring that you're going to get apartments and some commercial and that's it. Now, in both areas proposed, there, we have lousy bus service. I took the bus today. I have to wait an hour.
I'll need you to wrap up, Mr. Blackman.
I have to take a, I have to take a, a, it takes me an hour to get a bus. So how are we going to have commercials and prizes where they don't have access to roads and buses? Uh, and I've got a lot more stuff here, but, uh, I'll wrap it up. Thank you.
Thanks. If you could just take your raise hand icon down and you can certainly speak again once we work through our speakers list.
Our next caller is Adam Smith. Adam, please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have only five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Hi there, just checking, you can hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Uh, my name's Adam Smith. I'm a resident of Dalwood Drive. I'd like to speak in strong opposition to the Schedule A RS one greenfield parcel rezoning on the agenda. Uh, I'd like to open by noting that this rezoning only changes the current zoning to something that completely misses the mark and the O C P in these locations. While some hopes have been put forward from planning, there is no guarantee of what this rushed rezoning will evolve to in the future. In the rushed rezoning, these parcels, uh, in hopes of receiving a second rezone in the future that reflects what we would actually like to see here, is this really the best we can do? Is this more in line with the Maran planning feelings about single family homes? This mandate does effectively dissolve the bulk, any remaining long-term single family home opportunities in Squamish and forces the developer to build either apartment buildings or commercial buildings in the middle of existing single family neighborhoods. The notion we should sterilize these parcels and effectively ban any future single family development, especially in these locations, is overly idealistic and somewhat ignorant to many of the factors that make Squamish what it is and why it's an attractive place for people to live or move to. We identified issues many years ago that created big changes in the way development progressed in Squamish and what products were acceptable for new development proposals. Developers had the opportunity to propose mixed forms of housing, neighborhoods that met the needs of the municipality and the O C P. Within a few years, they had thousands of purpose rental condo and townhouse units built in construction or in the pipeline. Downtown development suited a downtown area. The lands in question are in the middle of residential neighborhoods, not downtown, not adjacent to downtown. Are areas that are currently single family and should incorporate single family in future subarea planning. This is not addressed in this proposal. Eradicating single family development in these areas and in Squamish is equally as tone deaf as only allowing single family neighborhoods to be built. We have fixed the density imbalance. We had and we will continue to do so via current and future high density projects. This rezone technically cancels single family homes in these areas and is premature if we don't have a zoning to suggest here. This is Diamond Fast touched perfectly on how RS one is actually more aligned with the O C P and how there are no plans or abilities to circumvent final O C P evaluation at the staff level. Planning notes that they wish to discourage single family exclusive neighborhoods. How is this accomplished? By a rezone to something nowhere near an appropriate E D zoning? Uh, developers do not want this zoning. We have heard how deep, uh, the D O S has gone with the developers in developing a collaborative solution here. What part of affordability does the D O S feel will be accomplished by twelve units per hectare? Has the D O S evaluated what a condo would cost in that area? Have they evaluated how many families would be better served by suites and carriage houses rather than one million dollar apartments? If single family dies a slow death here, so will all the jobs that go with it. The notion that Squamish companies that employ three to fifteen people can scale up and build apartment buildings is laughable. The notion that big developers will use Squamish trades that can't provide the manpower is equally naive. Council locals working downtown over... Regardless of what happens in... Only homes will still be desirable in Squamish, they will just become less affordable and more out of reach for locals. This will become a tear down community where there's no land to build homes. Lots of built homes will also need to factor in the house that needs to be torn down. Again, missing the mark where Squamish residents get to have a house that they so choose also has to factor into our environmental stewardship goal. In closing, we have been solving the lack of condo rental townhouse product here for the past several years and continue to do so for the foreseeable future with a list of projects in the pipeline now. As we can see, doubling our population in the next ten years is happening in a front-loaded manner. O C P mandates a measured approach that requires landowners to propose a mixed form housing model in these residential areas. Why aren't we listening to their plan rather than forcing down zoning and killing the Squamish construction industry and established adjacent neighborhoods? Based on wide reaching, the wide-reaching local impact of the proposal, I suggest the D O S vote to postpone this rezone in order to evaluate more carefully its impact on this community, more than can be effectively accomplished in a three-week period between first, second, and third reading. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Adam.
Mike McLellan is the next speaker. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have only five minutes to address council. Please go ahead. Okay, we'll go to the next speaker. Uh, next speaker on the list is Michael Hutchinson. Uh, Michael, you are, um, please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have only five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for your time and thank you for listening to the many voices here. I'd like to be, uh, quite precise about what I comment on. As a real estate developer in the community, we, um, you know, it might, it may seem to most that we do what we like, but honestly, we have two masters that we must serve and one of them is the O C P. When we develop in a community or any community, all developers come to the community and hope that there is a clear and concise O C P so that we may develop within the guidelines of the O C P. Because to do otherwise is, is fractious and difficult and becomes, uh, controversial. The second master who we don't hear, that perhaps the community doesn't hear from quite so much, is the five large financial institutions in Canada that are the tier one banks. And the tier one banks really decide when and where a developer builds. It, it may seem that the developers have all of a sudden decided that building in, uh, downtown Squamish is a great idea, but it's actually not the development community that, that, uh, decided that. It's the tier one banks in Vancouver and Toronto that have agreed to fund the developers to build in downtown Squamish. Partly that is to be, uh, it needs to be acknowledged, partly is because Squamish updated its O C P and had very clear guidelines and, and it was possible to move through the rezoning process. So I, I would like to speak to the bylaw that changes from RS one to R M five. I, I want to be clear that in my opinion, there is absolutely no potential possibility of building R M five in these locations. The cost of the servicing and the roads to reach there could not be covered in any way by the cost, uh, by, by five condos per acre. It just, or six condos per acre, it just will not work. So R M five effectively, and very effectively, I would say, sterilizes these parcels. And although that may be what the O C P would like, and, and I, it, it is clearly being used as a way to encourage the landowners to come in for a subarea plan, um, the financial institutions will not see it that way. Financial institutions are risk adverse and changing land use without an application from the landowner is, is terrifying to most financial institutions. So, um, I, I think that you have got to where you want to be. It sounds like to me that, that both proponents are prepared to do a subarea plan. In many cases in the past, if I may make a suggestion, you have stalled, uh, the third reading and, and you've passed first and second reading. You could put this bylaw on hold and you could ask the, the two proponents to come in with subarea plans within two years, and if they don't, then you could proceed with the R M five. But if you do place this five, R M five zoning and you vote in favor of this tonight, um, you may, uh, in, in, in some opinions, have fulfilled the, the wishes of the O C P, though I struggle to see that really, but, uh, what you will have done is send a very, very clear message to the financial institutions in Vancouver and Toronto that you better be careful in Squamish because a piece of land can have its underlying rights changed without the consent of the landowner. That will affect every developer and every development in Squamish, I promise you. I've worked here for twenty years and I could not count on all my fingers and toes the amount of times I've been asked about, uh, the Red Point development that was, uh, was downzoned in two thousand and four. It is still to this day something that gets bought up when I talk to banks in, in Vancouver. So I, I, I think that if you consider it from that point, that there, there may be a better alternative than approving this bylaw in its current, current state and perhaps just working with the developers to get to what you want, which is conformity with the O C P. Financial institutions would like that and, and they want conformity with the O C F P. The developers want that and they want conformity with the O C P. And in fact, I think the community wants that and you would like that. So I think we're all agreed on what we'd like.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Hutchinson.
The path to get there is, uh, is, I think, in this case, not serving all the interests of the parties involved. Thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments.
Next caller is Matt Freyder. Matt, uh, would you please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to? You have only five minutes to address council. You can go ahead.
Coming in with video.
Hey, welcome, Matt.
Hey, see you everybody. Uh, I think I've worked lots of you in the past and, uh, just want to say thanks for having us. Um, you know, I think, uh, I, I, I'm J Crescent. I backed directly onto the property, uh, in Schedule A. Um, I bought that property in two thousand and eight with my wife, knowing full well of the future development and the plans that were there. In fact, our house and the six beside us all had to put fire suppression systems inside our house because of, we backed a slice of green space that was supposed to be in the original development, uh, and then into housing. So from day one, we've known it was coming. Um, just quick backstory, I, I grew up basically after university in this corridor from Whistler as a renter, Squamish as a renter, Squamish as a condo owner, uh, to the ability to buy a piece of land and, uh, and build a home on it with my family. That home has a suite as do the two houses beside us, so we have six families living on the three lots on, on J Crescent where I live. Um, we, uh, love our street, we love the community that it's a part of. Um, I've lived in Riverswalk, amazing community, amazing, uh, in, uh, community as well in this town. Um, I've been an active participant from District of Squamish, um, Committee for the Oceanfront, the Detroit and Squamish, the Hospital Board, uh, Eric and I have been on Cubs opportunities together. I've been actively involved in this community from day one, um, and, and lived here for over fourteen years. I find the current rezoning right now, uh, shocking. Um, I find it narcissistic and I find it, um, really painful to watch. Uh, I was an active participant in the, in the, um, the, uh, changes to the O C P, met, um, Mayor Elliott and saw me stand up and speak several times at different places and hearings on that. Um, and, and I'm a, I'm, I'm a firm believer in the, in where O C P has gone to. Uh, Matt and I have had several conversations over the years about this and I believe mixed use is where we have to go. So I totally understand what needs to happen and change. However, this zoning in this proposal in Schedule A is totally contrary to that. Everything Amy said is exactly what I believe in. This, this property and the Crumpet Woods property needs to be mixed use. We all agree with that. Right now, this zoning is completely the opposite. This zoning is completely apartment. Michael Hutchinson talked about the economics of it fantastically. Several people tonight have talked eloquently about this. I'm yet to hear one person support this. However, what I have heard is every single person supports the fact that this should be mixed, mixed use. It should be mixed zoning. It should be a support of possibly some apartments and single family and carriage houses and there could even be potential for higher density properties in different aspects. I agree there should be a subarea plan, but we all believe there should be community engagement. Right now, my last comment here before I leave you is, this makes me feel the same way I feel when I watched Trump make narcissistic comments on Twitter about how he firmly believes that he is speaking for the people when we all know he isn't. Right now, myself and every speaker that has spoken tonight feel the exact same way that right now, council is pushing something through with a different agenda without hearing and understanding the people that are, they're actually being affected by it in the community. All of us agree there should be higher density on the land. All of us agree there should be mixed use. We don't believe there's been public consultation in this process. What Mr. Gunn said at the beginning, however, that this affords as a broader spectrum from the O C P, to us, when we bought into the O C P, it was looking at each parcel, not looking at the broader scope. There shouldn't be high density of apartment in one section without looking at the broader sense of the O C P. Each two pieces of land alone as apartments or high, not apartments, but high and mixed, I'm sorry, high apartment usage is not a mixed use livable area. Um, and, and it pains me to say that because I, I fully known this was coming, I fully known we'd have density behind us and I fully believe that we should have mixed use within that. Um, and, uh, it's just, it's, I feel really that after all the effort that I've put in and a lot of other people have put into this town, that we're feeling like we're being a bit backstabbed in this process and that we haven't had a chance to actually talk to you about this. So, um, thank you very much for this tonight and listening to all of our voices and I appreciate it and, and good luck with the decisions, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Matt.
Our next caller is Tyler Ovington. Tyler, could you please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to? You have only five minutes to address council. You can go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your opportunity. My name is Tyler Ovington. I live at one zero zero nine Aston Road in Squamish. Um, no, I'm, I'm not going to say much about the, the bylaws themselves. I think there's been a lot of good stuff said already with regards to, uh, the, the proposed R M five, uh, which for the record, I'm, I'm a bit shocked at, but, um, I'm more concerned about the process here that's, that's been going on and I'm curious to know why I, there hasn't been any public information meetings and like, just the public engagement overall seems non-existent really. You know, when I look at other neighborhoods that are at much smaller scale, um, you know, for example Finch, uh, Wilston Crescent, um, just areas like that that get significant attention and a lot of public engagement and just like real involvement from the community. And then, you know, you look at this one, which is a massive scale, and it just seems like it's missed. And, um, I wondered if there's a reason why, like, why was there no public information meeting held and just to kind of follow up on what Matt was saying, that the community engagement part here just seems really missed. And, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a bit concerning, that's all. Um, I'm not, like I said, I'm not saying if the zoning's right or wrong, I just, the process that this is taking here is, is just a bit concerning to me. Um, I'd really like to see council just, you know, take some more time on this, get the community involved, um, give the information like at the public information meetings that we're used to seeing where we know all the details and we understand the impacts and we can see how the infrastructure works and we can picture the buildings and we can have these nice display boards and we can watch the connectivity and we can get an understanding of what this new zone might look like, just so that we can at least feel like we've been involved because to, to go through and do something this big, right in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of summer, right before the summer holidays, I just don't get it. So just consider taking some more time, getting the community involved. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Tyler.
Our next, uh, we're going to actually go to a phone call now. When you hear the message you are unmuted, please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to. You have only five minutes to address council. Please go ahead. Hi, you can go ahead. Hi, you can go ahead. State your name.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Warren McDougall. Um, I'm, uh, Garabaldi Highlands. I'm, uh, calling in with regards to the property on the highway. I don't have it in front of me. I think it's 2727 in 2020 that it was, uh, article E.
Yes.
And so I'm the, uh, the found, the, the property is owned by my family and I'm calling in just with, my concern with this is it's basically being rezoned, um, with, with basically, we've had no, uh, consultation except at the last minute just before COVID happened. So this was sort of thrown at me and, um, by changing it to the new adventure zoning, you're essentially rendering the property, uh, unusable and of no value to, like, there's, there would be, um, no opportunity for me to sell it, no opportunity for me to use the property. So, um, we've been paying taxes on this property for approximately 40, 50 years and we would be lucky to recuperate taxes on it. So what I'm asking is just for this to, and we also, I'm not a developer. We were just, we're a generation Squamish family. We're simply just, it's something that we've, uh, you could, one could argue that we actually have been protecting this property, so it never got developed. So there's, there's, the reasoning behind this, I, I understand it, but, um, we had no development, um, plans in place for this and for, for any, for any time in the near future or in the, in the, uh, down the road either. So to, to, this is sort of a, a redundant step, um, that, a process that doesn't need to happen. And I've never been given the opportunity to sit down with anybody in the district because there was no notice, quite frankly. I'd like to be given the opportunity to sit down with the district and look at possibly you buying it from me or doing a land trade or just simply leaving it the way it is so that we can have the time to actually deal with, with what's at hand here because it's just thrown at me. And again, it's, it's, it's not something that we were planning on developing. So this process is not necessary and I would caution if this goes forward that there could be financial repercussions to the Squamish tax increases result of this because we've paid taxes on this for, for the better part of a century and that's, and if you wrote, if you pass this motion for our property, we're going to be in the hole financially for this one for a lot of money for what we've paid, paid in taxes. So, um, I'm just, so I, I ask that this just doesn't go through and give me the opportunity to actually have a sit down with, with district staff and proceed from there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Our next caller is John Hawkins. John, could you please state your name, address, and which bylaw you would like to speak to? You have five minutes to address council and you can go ahead.
Thank you. Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor Council. My name is John Hawkins. I live at 40450 Chekamis Place in, uh, Garabaldi Estates. Um, I, I sent a letter earlier today on this issue and interestingly enough, based on, uh, comments from Mr. Gunn earlier, um, it's, it's given me pause to, to rethink, um, the focus on, on process versus the actual proposal to, sorry, um, bylaw amendments 2742, 2718, 2731 around the rezoning from RS1 to RM5. Um, my, my issue is a little different from most of the speakers today. I'm concerned about the ecological integrity and the cumulative impacts of development on the Koho Park in, uh, Megan Creek area. And, uh, with respect to comments earlier by Mayor Elliott and Mr. Gunn, while I, I recognize that Koho Park is, is, um, certainly miserable on property and not subject to this issue, what most residents of the Garabaldi Estates and the Highlands community use the area recognizes Koho Park is in fact the Polygon and Holburn, um, lands because it is the, the trail itself that starts in the park and, and connects to the Garabaldi Highlands community is in fact a statutory right of way through the, those lands, uh, in the interest of the District of Squamish. But, um, I think what, what challenges me a little bit more is the difficulty that I've found in actually, um, accessing information, the time that we had to get information and, um, and actually understanding exactly what the implications are of the RM5 zoning. And, you know, as a, as a career bureaucrat myself, I'm pretty good at deciphering and finding information and in this case I found it quite difficult. So, um, I think, you know, Matt's comments about the, um, the density, uh, versus total numbers in an area are interesting and, and require more looks. So at, at this point, what I'm going to urge council to do is to consider that we've heard loud and clear tonight from various members of the community that, uh, that, you know, whether it's COVID related or, or just the timing with summer that this process feels rushed, there's certainly an indication there hasn't been enough time for community consultation and community information and maybe because of the current circumstances, we need to take a little bit more time. Um, so, so that's really where I'm going to focus, um, my efforts and I would really like to urge council to try to give the community a little more time for what I think are some really, really significant, um, proposals that are going to impact, uh, certainly in this case, at least three major communities, uh, Valley Cliff, Garabaldi Estates and Garabaldi Highlands. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks so much, John. Um, at this point in time, I am going to go to council and staff. Some speakers have raised questions. Some comments may have raised clarifying, or the need for a clarifying question from council. So I do want to give you that opportunity at this point and remember our role is not to debate anything that's been said, um, but rather, uh, you do have the opportunity now to ask questions of staff that would clarify some of the comments you've heard. Counsel French.
Mayor Elliott, I heard one speaker mention impact on Merrill Park. And I would like to get some understanding from staff if, um, any of what's proposed could potentially have impacts in, in the direction of developing Merrill Park.
Mr. Gunn.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, no, the Merrill Park is, uh, isolated from the, um, uh, the name, what's the name of the parcel? Not Newport Ridge. It is, yeah, Newport Ridge, sorry. Um, Merrill Park is isolated from the Newport Ridge parcel. There's no, uh, proposed development in Merrill Park. And, and although those two parcels are very closely adjacent to each other, it's actually a piece of private property that separate them. So, uh, no, there is no proposed, um, development on or, um, even touching by a slim margin, Merrill Park.
You want to follow up, Counsel French?
Yes, I'm pleased. And just if I can get further clarification, um, am I correct in saying that Merrill Park is a district park, a district of Squamish as opposed to say, uh, provincial, federal or any other type?
Yeah. Through you, Mayor, uh, follow up, absolutely. Merrill Park is owned by the district and any, um, use of that park or development of that park is fully within the control of the District of Squamish.
Any other questions, Counsel? Counselor Herford and then Counselor Pengel.
Thank you. We heard some concern around, um, the potential clear cutting of some property and I'm curious if we could, um, staff could maybe, um, run through what it, what restrictions are in place to prevent not just on that part, but any, any property, um, or from doing such things or what would be required to, to achieve that, just to, so we all understand where, uh, where we are at this point in time with that issue.
Mr. Valaniscus.
Um, I can handle this question through you, Mayor. So any, uh, part of the...
Maybe just introduce yourself since you've just popped up on everyone's radar here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, just introduce yourself, Mr. Valaniscus, so people know who you are.
Yes. Jonas Valaniscus, Director of Community Planning. Um, so the answer to the question of, um, uh, potential logging of the properties, uh, any property, any private property, um, is able to apply to a private managed forest land council, uh, if, uh, they desire to log their property. Uh, and if they're successful in that application, then, um, there's very limited control that local governments have in terms of controlling that logging activity. It's, uh, essentially under a provincial act, um, and district bylaws, um, when it comes to land use, uh, don't always apply in those cases.
Do you have a follow up? Counselor Herford, you think, you look like you're thinking hard, but I can go to Counselor Pengel and come back to you.
I'll take a second to, uh, digest that. Thank you, Mr. Valaniscus.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pengel, and then I think I saw Counselor Stoner's hand. And I just want to mention, um, uh, Mr. Vesely, uh, mentioned he had trouble seeing the presentation. Staff have now uploaded the PowerPoint slides to the public hearing page. Uh, so if for whatever reason you had trouble seeing the slides, they are there now. Go ahead, Counselor Pengel.
Yeah, thank you. A few questions, uh, came up for me. Uh, there was a couple around, um, the neighborhood commercial proposed in the RM5 zoning and wouldn't that compete with the downtown commercial? I'm just wondering if staff can speak to, uh, what the differences are, um, there or if there is a difference.
Um, through you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so, uh, the OCP outlines, um, a pretty defined vision of, uh, how we want to help people meet or, or, um, allow people to meet commercial needs in the community. Uh, we certainly want to have strong commercial centers, um, I've got a pair of strong commercial centers that are located downtown and, um, at the Garabaldi Village area. There's also commercial on the highway in a few locations and we really want to make sure that those are vibrant and, um, and continue to be successful. Um, but the OCP also outlines a desire to have neighborhood nodes, um, throughout the community that provide opportunity to meet some of the day-to-day needs, um, that community members have, uh, whether that's, um, you know, something like the, uh, Bracken, Brackendale General Store and Crowe Level, um, or something along those lines, a place to, to, um, get some coffee, uh, buy a few items. Um, we want to make sure that that is, is a possibility in different parts of the community and that supports goals related to, um, uh, allowing people to live in a walkable community, to be able to walk to those needs. Uh, it also supports creating a center that connect to transit, um, and helps reduce our need to drive around the community.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's also been some, uh, comments that sub area planning might happen anyway or developers were willing to do that anyway. Um, as I understand it, one, the OCP amendments, uh, gives much stronger direction to require that. And I'm just looking for a little bit more clarity on, um, is sub area planning required now? Would it be required, uh, if this passes or is there any difference there in terms of certainty on sub area planning and the consultation that would go along with that?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, that is the next one question. Um, so first off, we do have, uh, in the OCP that encourages sub area planning, um, and that tries to identify that as a need for the parcel, um, for the parcels in question. Um, one of the challenges with, uh, relying on an OCP or that sub area planning requirement or, or desire to achieve is that, that ultimately the, while there is, um, discretion, um, of the subdivision approving officer to, um, look at OCP policies in order to, um, determine whether or not a subdivision plan, uh, meets the community needs, is not a certainty that, that ultimately that decision would be made, uh, in favor of the requirement for sub area planning. And so there is risk that, uh, sub area planning, um, may not occur prior to subdivision of those parcels in the current situation. Um, what we try to do is create policy that creates, um, and I'm talking about the OCP bylaw amendments that have strong support for rezoning, um, and strong support for rezoning that would be in line with the OCP and, and, um, uh, favorable to, uh, future development on the parcel. Um, and that policy we feel is, uh, an opportunity to incentivize a rezoning and therefore incentivizes sub area planning process. Once, uh, some, uh, a landowner goes into a rezoning process, it is at the discretion of council, unlike a subdivision process. Um, and it is at the, um, discretion of council to decide whether or not a sub area plan is, is required. So, um, incentives, uh, like the OCP policy to engage in rezoning process increase the likelihood of a sub area plan process.
Okay, thank you. And one more if I might, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you. Um, there was a comment, uh, about, a couple of comments about these being stratas and then having condo fees and so on and, and often strata and condo and apartment, those terms get thrown around and conflated a bit. Um, are these necessarily going to be stratas with strata fees or might they just be that sort of style of building and, uh, but they might still be freehold, uh, owned?
Uh, ultimately that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Gunn.
Through you, Mayor. Um, ultimately that will depend on which housing forms are, uh, proposed or built in a particular development. Um, the, the OCP policies that we're discussing tonight support a range of housing forms, um, and a bunch of those housing forms could or could not include strata. So, um, single family, obviously is, is not set strata. Um, there's possibilities for shared wall agreements that, um, allow, um, decent or rural housing to, that individually owned rural housing that, um, is not strata and that can apply to, um, you know, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes or, or, um, or townhouses. Um, uh, when it gets into apartments, my understanding is that typically those are stratas. Uh, and so if apartments are incorporated into development plan, I would assume that they would likely be strata. Um, strata is certainly possible with some of the other forms as well. Um, we don't regulate whether a strata or, um, some other form of ownership is, uh, is implemented in our zoning, um, that we regulate the use, but not that level of ownership.
Uh, Mr. Valaniscus, you wanted to add to that?
Yes, uh, just to add that in some cases with, uh, apartment buildings, there is no strata. So in case where, um, it's a rental building, um, it could be a single owner, uh, for the building, in which case they don't, uh, stratafied.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
Could you see the chair? I was interested, one or two speakers suggest that the RS1 would allow for duplex or triplexes and I just wanted to confirm that that is not the case.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I, um, I'm not sure where the misconception comes from, but no, the present, the, um, RS1 zone is limited to single unit development. Um, and single units can encompass, um, secondary suite, um, and an accessory dwelling unit or also known as a carriage house, but, um, we do not, um, permit duplexes or triplexes in RS1 zone.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, any other questions from counsel? Um, Mr. Gunn, I, in listening to the comments that have come through, um, on the RS1 to RM5 rezoning, um, people are certainly criticizing the zoning aspect. My understanding is that, uh, we read both the OCP amendment and the zoning together, um, to achieve the broad community consultation. Is that what, what that OCP amendment does here?
Um, I missed, I, I don't understand quite the last part of your question.
Well...
When you said, when we were looking to...
If you just read the rezoning, this probably doesn't make sense. Um, if you read the rezoning together with the OCP, because we've heard a lot of criticism about, um, the inability to have broad, uh, a public consultation to understand what this might look like as a mixed use neighborhood. And so are these to be read separately or together?
Thank you, yes. Um, yeah, actually it was, one of the points that, uh, through listening to the comments, I think is important to make and that is that, I, you're absolutely right. The, one of the critical pieces in looking at each of these components is to look at the suite of bylaws and the suite of bylaws that are relevant to the, um, two parcels, the, the section A, the RS1 to RM5. A, the RS1 to RM5. When you look at the suite of the bylaws, what is intended is that we move from a current zoning, which is not aligned with OCP policy, the development of RS1 over time, that is exclusively single-family, and yes, it includes a secondary suite and A D U's, but that's a housing forum with that set of development opportunities that is really prolific across Squamish. We have a lot of that. We have much less representation of some of the other ones. And so, moving from that to the opportunity to have some apartments in the area, in the RM5, that would be an improvement in terms of becoming closer aligned with having a range of development opportunities across a neighborhood, not on an individual parcel, but across a broader neighborhood, like Exotica Cliff or Garibaldi Highlands. But it's really important to also look at the OCP policy that's accompanying them. The OCP policy is intended to provide an incentive that would bring the landowners to interest in a sub-area planning process, provides the opportunity and language around increased density to create that mixed housing development with the range of housing forums, address a number of items in the sub-area planning process. And that sub-area planning process is where we would really get the chance to have strong and meaningful community engagement around future planning for those properties. The sub-area planning process is really what we see as the critical step to hear what the community wants to see on these lands, and form a development vision that reflects those interests, respects interest in environmental values, addresses interest in recreation values, creates that range of housing forms. And so, it's that passage of bylaws, that suite of bylaws, that will, I think ultimately, help us get the best alignment with the OCP policies.
And one speaker brought up the second access to Valley Cliff, and that would be something that would be included in a sub-area planning process, is it not?
Yeah. For brevity in the introduction or the explanation of this set of bylaws, I highlighted just a few of the elements that are addressed in a sub-area planning process, but it is an extensive list of items that are to be picked from as appropriate. So transportation, infrastructure, schools, fire servicing, all of those elements are laid out as things that can be considered in a sub-area planning process. It is our best tool for making sure that development in large greenfield areas both respects the needs of the community and incorporates the values of residents in the area. And so the suite of bylaws that tries to bring that in will address a number of the questions that have come up with the OCP.
Thank you. There's no more questions from council. I do want to just check in with staff if you heard any questions that you wanted to respond to based on speakers' comments. And then I'll go back to our speakers' list.
Thank you. There were a few things that we wanted to address. You know, one of them was, we had a specific comment around consultation, a lack of consultation with the owners of the Coventon North parcel. I do want to point out that we did approach the owners early this year, and met early on February 5th, I believe was the first meeting, and we explained the concerns associated with the current zoning and the proposed rezoning approach. And we spent a fair bit of time in discussion with them around alternate approaches to try and address those risks. There was discussion of restricted pregnant that was proposed by the landowner, but ultimately, we weren't able to come up with a solution that addressed the concerns in a way that we felt was meaningful and long-term. But there was certainly an attempt to try and find a resolution to the risks that had been identified. I do want to speak a bit to why RM5 better lines with the OCP, and I think I touched on that in answering your questions, but we do see it as increasing the diversity of housing forms across the neighborhood. But on top of that, the suite of policies that include the OCP support for the sub-area planning process really will be what helps bring that development, or development of these lands into alignment with the OCP policy. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind. There was a question around taxes and the implications of rezonings on a tax base. And so, the kind of clarification there is that tax implications are not significant until there are buildings on the properties. And so, the assessment that these properties would get based on the lack of development means that there wouldn't likely be a significant change until there was development on the properties. There was a comment from the owner of 39300 Discovery Way, the commercial property adjacent to, or in the business park, and we are absolutely interested, from a staff perspective, in working with the landowner on a comprehensive plan to further amend the zoning in alignment with the OCP. That's something that we'd be very interested in discussion around. This proposed zoning in no way precludes that process. The owners of that land are welcome at any time to come in with a development application or begin initiation of a development application for that property. I don't think there's any prejudice that comes from this process to them going through any kind of rezoning application. It wouldn't be typical for the district to lead a zoning that involved, you know, it would be more appropriate to go through a process where they initiate a development application if they have a specific vision that they want to achieve, and to go through a normal development process to achieve that. I think those were the main points that I wanted to make, and maybe I'll leave some space for any of the other staff, you know, so, if others have anything else.
I saw Mr. Valeniskis.
Yes, thank you. So I think the other issue that has been raised in some of the letters and some of the comments is the lack of single-family properties for small builders and small companies in Squamish. And I think that the OCP policy actually does support reintroduction of some form of single-family into these two properties through the sub-area planning process. And we also have to remember that we've got other developments in queue, namely, the Chikai Fan development that includes a very significant portion of single-family lots if it comes to fruition. And we also have in our community over 3,000 single-family homes that regularly go through the kind of redevelopment process, whether it's renovation or complete rebuilding. So from staff's perspective, this shouldn't have a significant impact on those businesses.
Thank you. There was a comment from the owner of the parcel along Highway 99 that's being rezoned to ecotourism, that the change basically doesn't allow any use, and I'm wondering if you could clarify that?
Thank you. Yeah, so that parcel, given that it's in an extensive environmental area, does have a really limited range of great uses, but the use does include, or the zone does include the opportunity to engage in ecotourism activities, which is a commercial use, and has some limited infrastructure that could be built to support that use.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, I'm going to go to our moderator and see if there's anyone on the speakers' list. There is no one on the speakers' list right now. So if you've already spoken, and I know I had to cut a few people short, and you wish to add additional comments, you can raise your hand now. That is star three on the phone, or raising the hand icon on the WebEx.
Yeah, thank you. Matt Blackman, Garibaldi Highlands. I'm also the founder of the Squamish Alternative Vintage Group, aboard 750 members. I strongly, as I said earlier, I oppose this. I didn't get through all my concerns. I have some questions for council that can be addressed at a later time. According to a chief article entitled "Chief Climate Truths in Squamish" by Helmut Manzil, he basically estimated that there's between 5,000 and 10,000 units in the pipe, residential units, in the pipe come on stream. And I've been trying to calculate the number of units. We're seeing the waterfront development, Bosa and Scott Creek is somewhere around 1,500. We have the Newport Creek or Newport Development with 2,600 residential units, if that's correct. We're seeing, we've got Chikai Fan coming on, we have a bunch. I mean, we're going to see, our population has doubled, just doubled, just this year from 1980. So it's been 40 years to go from 10,000 to 20,000 people. And it looks to me like we're going to see it double again in the next five years or less. And my question to council is, and again, this is something we can talk about later, how quickly, how much densification do they want, and how fast do they want it? Because it causes massive disruption to see it happen too far too quickly. And do we want to become another Bernaby, Surrey, the Quillum, Porquillum? And I've lived in a lot of these places, and I left because I did not like the urbanization, the densification that was going on. So that's a question I'd like to have answered. Normally, I understand that July is a normal business month for council, and they like to take August off. I just question the wisdom of cramming through. And I counted them, 22 different public meetings, public meetings to discuss various changes. Given that we're in COVID, given that this is the first time we've actually done online meetings, digital meetings, it just seems to be, it seems an act of desperation. And I question the wisdom of this. And I'll be honest, this whole process does not pass the smell test for me. I would like to ask members of council, mayor, and also members in the Building and Development Department, if there are any actual or perceived conflicts of interest, because there's something vast that could go on with this whole process. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman.
Hello, thank you. My name's Glenn Campbell. I live on Brennan Road in Brackendale. I would like to say that all of the points that the previous speakers have brought up have been excellent, and that all of those speakers are very well-known in this community. To that, I'm going to speak to the concept of community. You may know Canmore, Alberta. It hosted the, it was part of the group of towns that hosted the 1988 Winter Olympics. Hence, it's 22 years ahead of Squamish in terms of post-Olympic development. We have a lot in common with them, and we have a lot to learn from Canmore, Alberta. I understand there's even some staff on our District of Squamish staff, people who worked in Canmore post-Olympics. So they, of all people, should know what the repercussions are of fast development that's done too quickly, too many changes too quickly. The community of Canmore has been very vocal ever since post-Olympics about rushed, high-density development. The result has been high-priced condos and apartments. Even as late as last year, in October 2019, a report in the Canmore paper called "The Craig and Canyon" provides a study that shows results of 30% of the homes are owned by non-permanent residents. To me, it sounds like apartments in the mountains sound like perfect second homes by people who contribute very little to year-round community life. I think we need to keep what Squamish has been known for as a heartfelt community and an inclusive community, and make sure that this rezoning is done on a thoughtful timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Tyler Ovington. I live at Austin Road. I just have one question to council or staff. Is there any reason in particular that the public information meeting process of this rezoning was skipped? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ovington.
Yes, Kelly Delaney. I spoke earlier. I live at 38558 Westway Avenue in Valley Cliff. I'm opposed to the North Crumpet and Newport Ridge rezoning. I just have two follow-up questions. Thank you very much for answering the question in regards to taxation. My first question is, does the rezoning process take into consideration any sort of infrastructure upgrades required prior to rezoning, or does this only happen after the rezoning is done? And the second one would be, has any consideration been given to the accessibility of these areas? Because I know the OCP has in its mandate to create an accessible community. I understand that there's a second road to be put in, but it does not make it very much of a walkable or a bikeable community when condos are on the hill. And I'm just, I would like to know if that consideration has been brought up at all, and what the council has come to in regards to that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Isaac Bell calling with Anton Properties regarding 36300 Discovery Way. I just wanted to follow up in regards specifically to Matt Gunn's comments about, he welcomes to have the conversation and the opportunity to collaborate, and we couldn't be more encouraged by that statement. I think that's exactly what we were asking for and would love to engage in. But further to that, with the rush process, again, we'll ask for council to defer advancing this bylaw, so we can do exactly that and commence developing a vision together with staff and council to move this property forward. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Isaac. And just for those folks that ask questions, we just like to collect them so we don't get into a debate between speakers and staff. So that's why you will get a response to your questions. We're just making sure we get through a few speakers. There's no one on our list. So staff, I heard a question about when infrastructure gets accounted for, why a public information meeting wasn't held, and any thought around accessibility to some of these areas?
Yeah. So first off, I'll just speak to the consideration of infrastructure and road access. So first off, you know, I think the question around road access and infrastructure reflect, I'm guessing it reflects a concern around whether the proposed rezonings, the development that could be associated with those proposed rezonings, would be able to be handled by existing infrastructure and road access. And to that question, I would say that, one, it's important to keep in mind that the proposed zoning does not actually increase the density. So the density, that level of density is already a possibility under existing zoning. And those, infrastructure and road access, probably the best way to address that is that a sub-area planning process, which the suite of bylaws really does try and set up, is in the, in particular, the OCP policy that provides that incentive to go through rezoning and sub-area planning process. That sub-area planning process is a great opportunity to address things like infrastructure and road access. There is a lot of leeway to look at a range of issues that are relevant and include those are issues that are concerning people and would be for a sub-area planning process.
Mr. Valeniskis?
Yes, thank you. I would like to address the public information meeting question, if I may.
Go ahead.
So in some of these cases where we are changing the zoning, and it looks like it's a fairly drastic change, in actuality, we fully... we fully expect that there will be, uh, future rezoning and subarea plan application. So this is the case especially with the RS one to RM five properties. And at that point, there will be, um, significant public engagement, um, be, just because the official community plan at the moment requires that process, whether it's RS one or RM five. Um, the stage one zoning bylaw update is meant to address some of these higher-risk properties, um, that are in misalignment with the OCP. And there was quite a bit of, uh, consultation done in the OCP process. So we've had consultation and there will be further consult- consultation. Um, and, and also there was, uh, a point raised a few times that there's willingness, uh, for these property owners to work with the district and with staff. Um, and, uh, you know, from our perspective, certainly there is willingness as well, but we need to do it through a proper process, which is a rezoning application or official community plan amendment application, you know, where the district can recover some of the fees associated, um, uh, on staff resources and the process itself.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Stoner?
Yeah, I'm curious, just a clarifying point, uh, to Mr. Valineskas's response. We've had a number of the, uh, potential developers suggest kind of holding at second reading and allowing for opportunity to collaborate on, on this more simple subarea planning process. Looking at a suite of, of, a number of bylaws here, so I'm just wondering if staff can speak to the potential capacity constraints in doing so.
If you may, Mayor. Um, so that is, uh, that, that is the, a, a key consideration for us is that, you know, in order to continue these discussions and, uh, continue engaging with the property owners, um, on a deep level, we do need, uh, to have a rezoning application or a subarea plan application so we can recover some of those costs. Um, having the bylaws there, um, at second reading for a long time is a little different when it's district-led, um, zoning bylaw amendments versus when it's applications, you know, and in some cases, applications sit at a certain reading for a long time because there's a lot of work going in, uh, in between on that specific bylaw. So in this case, we would be working on a different bylaw. Um, and I think our, our approach would be, my recommended approach is to, um, sort of eliminate that, um, misalignment, the risk of misalignment with the OCP in the short term and work with the property owners in, uh, you know, a medium perhaps term on coming up with all, with, with further rezonings that bring the properties even closer to alignment with the OCP.
Councilor Pengel?
Thank you. Yeah, a, a couple of questions. Um, one of the questions I heard from, uh, one of the callers was, um, why are we trying to align the bylaws to the OCP rather than align the OCP with the existing zoning?
If you may, Mayor, um, the intention of our bylaw structure is that the OCP is, um, established through a comprehensive public engagement process, which we had a very robust, uh, multi-year process to, to come up with, um, a, a bylaw that had a shared vision for the community. Um, that becomes the overarching, uh, document for, for planning in, in the district and for the work the department does. Um, and we try and align our zoning, um, with that because the zoning really is a regular, regulatory tool. It is not a vision document. Um, and we don't do engagement provisioning around the zoning. Um, because we want to make sure our entire suite of bylaws takes the vision and then ensures that that vision occurs on the ground in development. Uh, it really only works if we do a visionary process in the OCP and then implement through the, the zoning. If we do the other way around, um, we're not going to be able to incorporate that community vision to the regulation.
Okay, thank you. Um, and one of the comments I've heard more in emails, I think, than tonight, but, uh, has come across a few times is that there's just simply too much development and never mind RS one versus RM five, we just pause on development and come to this question of single-family versus RM five later. Is that something we can do or can you speak to that a little bit?
Um, yeah, so I, I think that, uh, the, the question around, um, development, uh, probably is one that should be asked in, uh, development applications where we are, um, at creating new density, uh, in, in either neighborhoods, either at a broader level or at, um, individual parcel levels. Um, the, you know, a subarea planning process or an OCP would be a, a time when we're doing that vision and, and creating that, uh, that idea around what level of growth we want to support. Um, parcels that have zoning in place right now, like the, um, RS one parcels, the Newport Ridge or, or Crumpet North, um, once there is zoning on those parcels for a given level of density, um, the, it isn't, uh, time without going through a process like this where we can assess and, and, uh, change zoning. Um, it, off, off the fly, uh, zoning that's in place does permit a certain amount of density. Uh, and so, um, really that kind of consideration has to happen at, at a broader level. And as I said, subarea planning would be a place where we could do that, where we could consider what level of density we want to see on, um, larger parcels. Um, I'm not sure if I answered that question. Maybe Jonas, if you have something more to add to that?
Um, yes. So I think there's part of that question about whether we can, uh, pause development. Um, we don't, we can't really, as a local government, don't really have jurisdiction pausing development unless it's in some cases, uh, when it comes to building permits or business licenses for a short amount of period, um, when there's bylaws in preparation. But this isn't, um, this isn't the case. Um, so the short answer is we can't, we cannot pause development, especially when it conforms to the zoning, um, of the day.
And one more, if I might, um, sort of going in the opposite direction, I heard from, I think, a couple of developers that if we were to change this develop, uh, this zoning, it would make developing, or financing impossible and would stop their ability to develop it. Um, do we have, uh, any insight into whether that is the case or the impact of that? And, and I think one of the things that tweaked this question for me is Red Point was mentioned as something that has been, uh, obstructed by a change in zoning, but my recollection is they recently came before council, uh, wanting to change some of their phasing, but that they are going ahead and, and maybe I've got things confused, but it just sort of, uh, made me question the whole financing piece and how that relates.
Mr. Valineskas?
Thank you. Uh, yes, that is something that keeps coming up. Um, uh, Red Point, or I believe it's Red Bridge maybe right now, um, it, it does seem like it's, uh, something that is proceeding, uh, through, um, through our process. Um, they're at the development permit stage right now. Um, in terms of financing for properties, uh, that are going through a rezoning process, we, we haven't, um, it may, you know, we don't, we're not experts on development financing. Um, that is, that is the developers. But in practice, uh, we haven't seen a lot of issues with that. I mean, we see applications, uh, proposing to rezone, uh, something that's low density, higher density, um, all the time, or proposing to rezone from one use to another. Um, I'm not sure if all of them are financed by banks, but definitely some are. Um, so, um, unfortunately, uh, I think we don't see that, uh, very mu, as, as a, as a big barrier in practice. Um, but again, we're not experts on financing development.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go to Councilor Heford.
Thank you. Um, there were some questions, uh, uh, earlier or, um, maybe it was sort of some rough estimates about population growth. And I know there's a section of OCP that covers, um, population growth and projections. And I'm curious, uh, if you could speak to, um, maybe where we are, uh, in relation to those OCP, uh, projections, like are we, are we, are we close to the projections? Are we way off? And also how those projections, uh, feed into, um, other pieces of policy such as the zoning that we're contemplating today?
Uh, yeah, so the OCP actually, it, it was in the development of the OCP that we had, um, we did some, uh, work on estimating different potential growth projec- uh, projections or trajectories. And, um, and then growth management policies were then built around those, but those, um, projections don't actually live in the OCP. Um, I can say that, uh, you know, that in, in those projections, there was a low, medium and high, uh, projection. And, uh, I think often it feels like the community is, is growing at a, a, you know, almost unbelievable rate. But what we have seen is, is the, um, growth hovering around, I think, just slightly over two percent per year. Um, and so the, uh, you know, the idea that the, the community will double in, in five years isn't really borne out by what we've been seeing in, in growth until now. And so there's, you know, census every five years and then estimates, uh, in between that, uh, by the province. And it, it seems like we do have, uh, fairly steady growth, um, but not, uh, off the charts growth. In, in the growth management projections we did through the OCP, that I would say that the high projection growth is, um, something that is, uh, extremely unlikely to be seen. Um, I, I imagine we're hovering somewhere between the low and, and moderate, um, projection of growth. And, uh, I think, you know, we're, we're certainly seeing people move to town and, you know, the development that's being built is, um, has people moving in, but, uh, it does not reflect, um, you know, a, a level of growth that's going to see, uh, you know, the doubling in the time period that was mentioned. Uh, is there more to that question, Glenn?
Uh, no, that's, that's fine. Thank you very much for that answer.
Councilor Stoner?
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, there were a number of comments about the timing of the public hearing. And Mr. Gunn, you alluded to this a little bit in terms of, uh, original outreach to the property owners that are affected. I'm just wondering if staff can kind of revisit that timeline and speak again to how we've kind of ended up here in July at a public hearing.
Yeah, uh, thank you, through you, Mayor. Um, certainly, uh, the, the plan for this, um, uh, public hearing timeline was not to have the public hearing in July. Um, we actually began the, the process in the year and reached out to, um, uh, some of the property owners to discuss, uh, potential considerations around zoning, um, early in the, in the year. Um, we had, uh, put together, uh, bylaws and, uh, staff report that was going to be considered by council in March, um, which would have then had a public hearing sometime, I believe in April. Um, but, um, there was that kind of crazy week or two where we were all learning day by day, um, what our new reality was going to be like. And, uh, the, this, uh, first and second reading of these bylaws landed right in that time period. And so, um, the bylaws, given the, the, um, significance of the bylaws were pulled from the agenda at that time and have, uh, sat, um, for quite some time. And it is more recently that we have come to the realization that, um, this, uh, reality and these, um, you know, the need to run, um, public hearings, for example, over the weather, probably going to be something that'll be with us for a while. And so at that point, uh, there was a decision that, um, you know, that the business of council would have to continue in this manner. And, uh, so we initiated, um, a restart of the process and that is how we wound up in the summer. It was not the intention initially, but, um, we've had to do a lot of adapting and adjusting, uh, given the, the public health context in, in that, in the province and the world.
Mr. Valineskas?
If I may just add to that, um, answer, I believe it's not, um, uncommon or, or unheard of for the district to have held public hearings, um, in the summer in the past.
Any more questions, council? I'll go to Councilor Pengel and then we're going back to, um, speakers.
Thank you. Um, we've heard that these are higher priority, uh, items and that, so they're part of, they're phase one in, in a three-phase, uh, bylaw, zoning bylaw rewrite. Um, there's been some suggestion that there's a, a likelihood that, um, there might be some subarea planning and further rezoning that developer initiated, uh, coming out of this. But, um, is it impossible or unlikely at all, um, that as part of phase two or phase three, uh, we incorporate some of that feedback, um, in, as part of the phase two rewrite, which I, I understand is for, uh, the end of this year or even phase three, if, if, you know, particular issues came up that we wanted to address that we, you know, is there anything stopping us from doing that?
Um, through you, Mayor, it really depends on the magnitude of the proposed changes. Um, if, uh, if there are somewhat, um, uh, you know, if there, if there are proposals for, for changes that, um, are not going to significantly delay, uh, the process, um, and as to, uh, any element in this set of bylaws could be made, um, certainly in either phase two or phase three. Um, as the level of complexity increases on any proposed changes, the opportunity for addressing them, um, early in phase two or later in phase three, um, becomes more challenging. So, um, you know, simple things that, that, um, are, uh, you know, don't require a lot of further analysis or, or consideration to be addressed easily in phase two. You know, a, a little bit of analysis and consideration probably phase three. If we're talking about a really significant set of changes that requires, um, you know, significant input in terms of staff capacity, then it may not be possible to do it within the, um, existing program. And it probably warrants a separate process.
Okay, we're going to go back to our speakers list.
Uh, hi there. Um, so I'm addressing the, uh, I spoke earlier about the North Crumpet and the Newport Ridge developments up in the Highlands there. So just been sitting here, uh, listening and, and, uh, hopefully I have a better understanding of this. So the OCP's policy, you, uh, Matt, uh, Matt Gunn had said, there's a robust process for the OCP, uh, to align with the zoning bylaws. So I assume that the OCP, OCP was addressed and written and constructed and, and, uh, modified to whatever it needs to be and where it sits today. And then in saying that, this RS one, uh, section up above us here, uh, doesn't fit into the OCP. So now you're trying to change it to the RM five. Uh, so you're kind of trying to put a, a square block in a round hole because suddenly it doesn't fit. That's how I'm sort of perceiving this. Uh, in saying that, uh, you had said the owners were, uh, I guess consulted a little bit, but you couldn't come to a solution, but we're still moving ahead with it. Or it appears that the line of questioning and the dancing around the answers, uh, it just seems to be pushing ahead. In saying that, then you went ahead and said the, in March, you did throw out the bylaws, you put out the staff reports, in April, COVID hit. And you've just said it yourself that the complexity of the changes are going to be harder to address further down in the phases. So I would implore the city council, really think about the magnitude of this situation because I would consider this a very complex decision. Um, if you jam it down the community's throat, it's going to be harder to change down the road. Phase two and phase three, more challenging if it's a more complex thing. In saying that, um, we all know, and people have echoed it previous to me, that, um, people moving here, the population is going to rise, we're going to have densification, we're going to have all that. But you have to choose the right neighborhoods. And I have to go back to what now concerned me about local businesses and us trying to, um, spice up the downtown core and keep things alive. And some of the response was, well, if we do commercial and, um, uh, apartment, we can walk to the local coffee shop. Well, what does that do? How many, how big of a population does that type of development up there take away from me going downtown to the local coffee shop? How many customers are you taking away from somebody who lives in Squamish and pays taxes and owns a coffee shop here? Because now I can walk five minutes up the road. Because now I can walk five minutes up the road. I get it, densification's going to happen, but I just really, really have to implore you to really think about this situation. Because once you start moving against the owner's wishes, which they voiced their opinion, once you start moving against the community's wishes, you've said it yourself, it's going to be harder to address this complicated issue the further down the process you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to call for a 10-minute recess. It is currently 9:13, so we'll come back actually at 9:25. All right, we're back. I'm going to go to our moderator. Are there any more speakers?
Yeah, we're going to take a phone call now. When you hear the message, you are unmuted. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have up to five minutes to address counsel and you can go ahead.
Hi there. Darren McCartney, 1000 Lanark Place in the Garibaldi Highlands. I'd like to actually speak to two of the bylaws, the last one on Discovery Way and then the first bylaw being presented tonight.
Go ahead, Darren.
Thank you. As far as the one on Discovery Way and looking at that, and I'm just catching up today and looking at that bylaw, obviously a very direction, a different direction from where the site was before, but in the office component and the location, it's probably fairly close to a feasible zone. But the one comment I'd like to make is I really think that some minor changes need to take place in order to allow feasibility on that site. And I think it's very close and it sounds like the applicant, not the applicant, the developer there is really willing to work with the city with that. So I'd encourage that to be put off a little bit to allow them to try and make some minor amendments to that zone, just so, you know, it could become a site that starts to unlock and, you know, add all that employment space in the next five to 10 years. And I think the key things that stand out to me are a little bit more room for ground floor restaurant or at least coffee shops, sandwich places, that kind of thing onsite. I think you see a lot of examples of these types of developments in Lower Mainland that have been successful, but they usually do have onsite kind of service commercial related to the site. So I think that's something that should be considered and would really help with lease-up and financing. And then secondly, perhaps some warehouse and distribution on the ground floor, minimum sizes, just so businesses that are operating or renting office space in office buildings could have some smaller kind of incubator warehouse space in order to, you know, just allow smaller tech businesses and stuff like that to grow. And that would really help, I think, a site like this. So I think if a couple of months went more into collaborating with the developer on this, you might be able to come up with a plan that works now as opposed to rezoning it and then having the applicant have to come back. Because I think in this case, it is a downzone, so I think it would be better for both parties, of course, frankly, the city as well as the developer, to try and come together on that site. Pardon me. Secondly, on the rezoning of the RS1 to RM5, I guess, I want to circle back to some of the comments people have been talking about development financing as well as feasibility on these sites. And I think where that comes into play, you know, this actual zoning that's taking place on the site isn't the end zone on the site, in either cases. I mean, I don't think anybody's planning on building out RM5 as detailed in this zone. I think this is really kind of a nudge in the direction of where the municipality and the OCP might be pushing these sites and taking a proactive step in that prior to an applicant perhaps coming up with something that's more palatable for, you know, the directives from the OCP and city directors, right? The one concern that I have comes back to financing and feasibility is if you're a landowner that comes into town, and I mean, one of these sites probably has sat very dormant for a long time, the other site is very active or has been active, so they are kind of different. So I can't paint them with the same brush. But if you come into town and you get into a multi-phase development scenario, in this kind of instance, when there's kind of a sweeping change like this to zoning, from an ownership perspective, a land ownership perspective, or a lender on that site, there isn't enough time taken to consider those changes. You know, it increases the risk on lending on those properties, right? Because if you're into a multi-phase development, investing in infrastructure, you've already spent the money upfront, you've done a deal with the city on where it's going, it's really important. I know it's hard because OCP's changed, population's changed, everything else, but Squamish is a small town, it can take a long time for some of these sites to develop. And one of the things that comes up in this process is someone's, you know, seven years into a 12-year plan and then the changes come, right? And so word travels fast. I mean, Vancouver is a tiny town as far as the development, the financing and development community is concerned. And so even if it's not the intention, if the intention here is just good planning, the lending environment will look at this and lenders will look at it and say, okay, you know, if we go and put a $12 million loan on some large site, what if the city changes its directive in six months or a year? Is that a good place to put our money, right? And it's certainly not the intention of the city, I know, to stop that investment from happening, but it's the way that the outside business community will look at Squamish and has looked at Squamish at times. Because I've been here for 15 years and I've seen so much change in sentiment, where the town is going. And I think it's so important that we just take the time to process these things. So we respect those dollars that have invested thus far. We do our best to honor deals and plans from the past, understanding that things change. And then also, if we want to make a change on a site larger like this, instead of rezoning a site to something that really is not going to end up being the final zone on the property, a developer has to claw their way back up, there has to be a way, reaching out to them through process in order to get to the same place without someone having to, you know, pay a second time to get it done or claw their way back up. And so I'm not saying that-
About 30 seconds, Darren.
Pardon me?
About 30 seconds, if you could wrap up.
Is it per bylaw?
No, it's five minutes.
Oh, per human being?
Yes.
So anyways, I'm very close to that. But in any event, I think we just really need to consider the speed and the consultation that takes place and also treat all these files with respect because over time, construction industry really, really does contribute to this town. And I think it's just so important that in these cases, we maybe slow it down. Because I think on top of this scenario with the development side, I think that the local neighborhoods don't really understand fully what mixed use in some of these single-family neighborhoods would look like as well. So I think there's a lot of work to be done before this kind of change is ready to be adoptable. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Darren.
We have another caller. Heather Dunham is up next. Heather, could you please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to? You have up to five minutes to address counsel. You can go ahead now. Go ahead, Heather.
Are you guys having a mute voice? Yes, we can.
Oh, wonderful. Sorry about that. Thank you. It's Heather Dunham, 1005 J Crescent, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak for a second time to you this evening. I'm going to be really quick this time because I wasn't quick the last time. It appears to me, just looking on your District Squamish website, that council has received roughly 100 written submissions from community members who are not supportive of the rezoning of the two large greenfield parcels from RS1 to RM5. We've also heard over 20 speakers tonight that have in one way or another expressed their lack of support for these rezoning initiatives that are district-led. And I haven't heard one offer of support, either written or verbal. And I find this extremely compelling. And again, I just, I'd really urge council to consider halting this rezoning initiative and, you know, perhaps choose another avenue, you know, move forward with the landowners. So both landowners have told us explicitly, you know, in writing and verbally, that they are either willing to work on a subarea plan or they are actively working on a subarea plan for their land that they own. They don't want single-family exclusivity on their properties. They certainly don't want RM5 zoning either. What they want is, are communities that are engaging and inclusive, not exclusive. RM5 is exclusive. It's apartments and a commercial, if you like. But the landowners want to work on these subarea plans. And I just think that this preferred approach will result in a thoughtful, more thoughtful and comprehensive neighborhood plan for both parcels. That will be far better for our community and the future of Squamish than simply putting through a rezoning that doesn't make sense and clearly isn't supported. So again, I just, I ask you to really reconsider. You have the opportunity to reconsider this rezoning and let's try together and come up with a better way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, thank you. Staff, I do have one question. And that is related to, hold on, now I've lost my... At first and second reading, we did not further Section J, which was an amendment to our CAC policy. But I have read some comments in the letters and certainly heard comments tonight that this has an impact and potentially impact on affordability of the homes in these neighborhoods. So one of the reasons that I rejected it at first and second reading was that it wasn't, that statement wasn't connected in any way to some of the priorities that we have as a council around affordable housing as well as our climate emergency. And I wonder if there's a way to bring that back, but link it more directly to the things that we're trying to achieve. So yeah, we can calculate CACs at the original density, but you've got to deliver on affordable housing, so meet or exceed the targets in the CAC policy and meet some criteria in our climate portfolio. Is that, is that a possibility? Mr. Vilaniskas?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, it's certainly a possibility. We could bring back an amended policy from what we've previously proposed, if council directed us to bring that back, and we could do that with future readings of the bylaw.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any further questions? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to test the waters here. If there are no further speakers, I have asked counsel, oh, we have another speaker. Not going to test the waters.
So our next caller is Amy Fast. Amy, you are next. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Amy Fast. I live in the Garibaldi Highlands and I'm speaking towards Part A, rezon large greenfield properties, zone RS1 to RM5, North Crumpet and Newport Ridge. I just had some clarifying questions for Mayor, Council, and staff. It was noted at the start of the presentation that these zoning changes were considered your highest priority. And I'm just wondering why the highest priority zoning changes are being done with such limited public consultation. I note that even during the pandemic, you have hosted two public open houses for the Business Park rezoning and conducted an online survey. And I'm wondering why wasn't the same consultation offered for this high priority process? I do have a couple other things, if you want me to say them all first.
Yeah, I don't want to engage in a back and forth with staff, so I'd rather you complete your comments.
Yep, thank you. With this rezoning, you are effectively reducing the density by way of reducing the potential growth for area of the development. But then expect and have actually encouraged through your proposed OCP amendment, the developer will rezon to add density and arrange of housing. It was suggested that there might still be single-family use allowed, and I'm wondering why you would rezon away from that just to possibly revert back to some of it. Comment was also made about discouraging large-scale developments that have only one type of housing. I would ask, shouldn't you discourage any large-scale developments that offer only one type of housing? And that the RM5 zone is just another zone that is one type of housing? On our site, you know, we do have a site that is 300 acres. I don't think any one form of housing should be in a development that large. It's my impression that you're standing behind the OCP in every other way during this process, but the one policy you aren't satisfied with is the one that ensures this land requires a subarea plan. And isn't it an option just to amend the OCP language to what you're proposing and that will ensure that the requirement for a subarea plan is realized rather than doing the rezoning? And that's it, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Next caller is Kelly Delaney. Kelly, if you're still ahead, you can please state your name, address, and bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have up to five minutes.
558 Westway Avenue. It's against the North Crumpet and Newport Ridge rezoning from RS1 to RM5. I'll make it very quick. I'm just, I know I asked the question before, but I'll just ask it again. I know Matt was talking about the vision for OCP. There's a vision in place, which I'm for, but I'm not, I don't completely understand what the vision is for these areas to have that particular densification in them and still have accessibility to, you know, a community. And how the municipality came around, or council members came around to this particular decision. It, and I would also like to know that how, how they came to, my apologies. I might be understanding in downtown Squamish, when densification occurs, I'm no expert, but it appears that when people buy condos, they have a tendency to walk around, there's services, post offices, government services, banks, food, supermarkets, when it's accessible by walking or cycling, they're less likely to buy transport, such as a vehicle, lessening the impact on the environment. What justification is there to build condos on a hill and how did this decision come about? I'm no expert, but it'd be interesting to look into that. And I'm no expert, but I have an inkling that there would be more vehicles purchased because people are less likely to walk and less likely to cycle. So it's my opinion that it doesn't align with the OCP at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to Matt Blackman. Matt, you're the next speaker. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Matt Blackman, I'm in the Garibaldi Highlands and founder of Squamish Alternative Energy Group. I will be speaking to Section A again. I'm just, I'd really be curious, given that we've repeatedly heard from council and mayor that we have an open, transparent, and engaging council, how did this whole thing come about? Because it seems there's a lot of pushback. From my point of view, and you know how I feel about it, it seems very, at best, to be kind, very poorly conceived, and without any consultation with the owners, all the owners I've heard in every single member of the community have opposed this. How did this whole thing gain the light of day? I'd really like to know how this whole process occurred. And I think, again, we need to understand the process here because something in my mind went terribly wrong. Are we going to find that out and when? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, before I go to staff, do you have any further questions? Do we have a speaker? Yep, go ahead.
So our next speaker is Andrew Weeger. Andrew, could you please state your name and address and which bylaw you'd like to speak to? You have up to five minutes to address counsel and you can go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My name is Andrew Weeger.
I live on First Drive, and I'm speaking on the rezoning of RS1 to RM5 on the Newport Ridge and Crumpet Woods parcels. I just want to state that I've, I agree with a lot of the comments that were made tonight on the rezoning and the lack of consultation. I've had several conversations with my neighbors on these things that have come out, basically just by us looking through the paper and stuff like that. And I just want to say, most of us are not in support. I moved from a high-density residential area of Fort Moody to a single-dwelling area neighborhood for this reason. And I feel like this is going to change the whole vibe of this community that I moved away from. I lived in those high-density residential. I have nothing against high-density residential in places like downtown and stuff like that, but I just want to say that I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I just want to check in with Glenn Campbell and Kelly Delaney. Your hands are still up, and I think it's from the last time you spoke, but if you could take your hands down, that would be great, unless you do intend to speak again, in which case, we will check in with you again. Do we have any other speakers?
No.
Okay. We'll go to counsel. Not seeing any hands. Staff, are there any questions you would like to respond to that you heard in the last round of speakers?
If I may, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Vilencus.
Yeah, there was just a few questions. One was on consultation with the landowners. And I just want to, again, reiterate that there has been consultation with the landowners going back to February. And we've actually made some changes to the bylaws as a result of those discussions to try and bring the density closer to, to what is allowed on the properties now. In terms of, there was a comment about why are we densifying in these areas? And I just want to reiterate that we're not proposing to densify in these areas in the zoning bylaw update, in, in the zoning changes. We're just replacing one type of density with another. Some densification will eventually come with the sub area planning process, which will consider all the things that, you know, we are hearing about, parks, access, infrastructure. And that's it.
Thank you. We have another speaker.
We're going to go to a phone call right now. When you hear the message, you are unmuted. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have about five minutes to address council, and you can go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel, District Staff. David Head, Condor Place, Garibaldi Highlands, speaking to Amendment A regarding RS1 through RM5. I'd like to take a moment to thank the previous speakers, as well as the public input process. I have not heard one person speaking in support of this motion. I oppose this motion. I respect that the public hearing is having to go through an electronic process. However, please recognize that the public hearing, we were provided notice that we were to support documentation, provide written communication by 3:00 PM this afternoon. And so far, on the public website, the district is only allowing us to read supporting documentation through 12:30 PM of today. In this regard, it appears the public hearing process is flawed, as well as other things that have been attempted to be pushed through. I don't understand the draconian measure in putting through our zoning change this time. It has not been put through by either the landowners or the community. And I request that we take additional time and move this to the back burner until this can be studied further. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just for clarity, I believe the message on the website is that we have been receiving notices throughout the hearing at hearings@squamish.ca, and that as we receive them, we are posting them to the public hearing page. Is that correct? That is correct. So that, that is occurring. I just wanted, I was just checking with our Legislative Services staff here at District Counsel, any further questions? Counsel, Alfred.
Thank you. Earlier, I believe it was in Mr. Gunn's presentation at the beginning, he talked about the level of consultation selected for the project and on the scale of public consultation. And I was curious if we could loop back to that and maybe provide context to the folks that don't go with that consultation spectrum, and why this project landed where it did from your perspective?
Yeah, the project was identified as a, in, there's a, we use the IAP2 scale for discussing public engagement, and the level of engagement that was selected was involve, which, no, sorry, inform. Inform is intended for situations where it is appropriate to let, inform the community or the stakeholders what is going on and hear feedback. One of the big pieces that I think really provides the context on this is that the, and I think we're talking about RM5, in particular, the RS1, RM5 zoning. There's kind of two bookends to what we expect from development on this property, on these properties. One, there's a vision that's been articulated in the OCP, and there was a lot of consultation that went into the vision for development in the community and on parcels like this. And so we've got a lot of background consultation that can inform the kind of policy objectives for development here. As I said before, the intention of the suite of bylaws, we've got, you know, a zoning that's put in place that is more aligned with the OCP but isn't the best alignment with the OCP. We've got policy that's intended to encourage rezoning and that will support the development of a sub area plan for the area, and that's a pretty heavy consultation process. And so the, with the consultation that informed the OCP being implemented and the consultation that would occur through a sub area planning process that we would go through if the bylaw, the OCP bylaws adopted and is successful in incentivizing or encouraging landowners to go through a sub area planning process, that's a lot of consultation on both ends and would help us make sure that whatever development ultimately occurred on these properties reflected the, both the vision and the, and the kind of local concerns from the community about developing those homes.
Thank you. And maybe just, that sort of tied it together, and maybe if we could step back one, one more bit, one step, which is the other options on that spectrum versus inform, consult, and, and how, how we got to the informed level. I understand that that's the level that we, that staff's been proceeding on. I'm just curious how we landed there and what the other options were.
Yeah, there's a range, I'd have to pull up, but there is, there's everything from inform, you know, give me two seconds, I can pull up the actual spectrum. I've got the proper terminology. Yeah, so it goes from a forum, consult, involve, collaborate, and empower. And the, in this particular situation, I think because of the intention to support a, a, I think, a, their engagement through a sub area planning process, the concern around doing a higher level of engagement over this, this step at this point, especially around the suite of bylaws, did not come up as a, as a high priority for, you know, certainly, if you get up to higher levels of engagement, like collaborate, those really require a possibility where an outcome is going to be, yeah, there, there are certain constraints that sometimes the probability of getting to a level of agreement at some of the higher levels of engagement are unlikely to be successful, and given that the, some of the risks were going to involve rezoning choices that may not be appealing to some of the landowners, higher levels of engagement look to be challenging to achieve.
And the last, the last bit on this, if I, if I can quickly, so then the, the sub area plans, which would essentially be the desired outcome, one of the desired outcomes, what level would those be on that, on said same spectrum?
Yeah, the sub area planning is, is a fairly comprehensive public engagement process, and that would be at involve, which is to work directly with the public throughout the process to ensure the public concerns and aspirations are consistently understood and considered. That's a robust process where we hear the concerns from the community and make sure they're considered in the development of the options and solutions. And that's, that's the level that we often work at in those types of planning processes.
Thank you. Counsel, it is very close to 10 o'clock. I need a motion to extend. We have a caller on the line. Moved by Counsel French, seconded by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Are we ready?
Yes, we're going to go take a phone call now. When you hear the message, you are unmuted. Please state your name, address, and which bylaw you'd like to speak to. You have about five minutes to address council. Please go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, yeah, my name's Christopher Bolton. I live at 1466 Kermit Knapp. Just had a couple questions, I guess. One, I was just curious, Matt, what you're basing your growth rate on? I know you said you're at a small to medium growth rate. I'm just curious what your, what your baseline for that is? Like, is that countrywide? And then I'd like to move on to questions on, with, with all this growth, particularly, what we have in the process of infrastructure or amenities development, for example, like, let's see here, sorry, a road, for example, schools, is going to be wastewater, water treatment, and, and fire, I guess, would be, fire department, I believe, is eight to five, Monday to Friday, for career, and the rest is based on volunteers. With this growth, growth, I'm assuming it's going to need a lot more growth within the fire department and their structures and whatnot. Career staff possibly increasing their hours, I'm guessing. I'm not sure what your plans are for that. But yeah, infrastructure citywide, curious to know how you, what your plan is to keep up with the infrastructure to take care of all the new, new growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers? Okay, Mr. Gunn, do you want to address those last few questions?
So I think I understood the question. So that one was, where did we get our growth rate? So there is a couple things. In, in OCP development, when we were doing our growth management planning, we relied on three different sources. We had done a previous study in the employment lands survey or study and strategy that did some growth rate projection. The SLRD has done, did a, as they were updating their RDS, they had done a, that's the regional growth strategy, a comprehensive set of, they hired a consultant to do an analysis of growth rates, expected growth rates for the community and, and the region in general. There was a problem that was existing at this time. But we used those projections, or maybe even those two, and there are multiple projections and scenarios in the SLRD study. So those, those informed future predictions say kind of above 2% is reflective of more what's happening now, what has been happening over the past several years. And so that's a more, you know, what are we seeing in the moment, question or comment. And then the, those, the SLRD and the ELS study had these ranges of projections that went from that low end to higher levels. And in terms of, you know, how do we address infrastructure, I think we're getting a little off, you know, beyond the scope of these bylaws, but in general, at the district, we, our engineering department has spent, you know, a fair bit of time and, and energy on creating a set of infrastructure plans. So we have infrastructure plans for sewer, water, yeah, the, the range of utilities that they have to address, and they use projections to identify where potential deficiencies are in the future, where we need to make investments. And those then drive decisions on investment and where we work to build infrastructure to handle projected growth. One of the things that we added into the sub area planning considerations in the last OCP is a few different points to be considered around infrastructure. So when we get into a sub area planning process, you know, there's, there's components around considering what the infrastructure requirements are and how they relate to the district, but also considerations around a fiscal analysis, which is intended to reflect, you know, where is the breaking point between the density that gets added to new neighborhoods and the infrastructure that is required and the, the cost to service that infrastructure over time? So we can figure out if there are sweet spots for density where the tax revenue from people that live there will support the, the infrastructure. One of the concerns in single-family unit developments is that because of the low density across larger areas, the, the cost of servicing can be quite high, and it can be a burden on the taxpayers. So it's sub area planning is intended to give us opportunities to, to figure out where the kind of breaking points are that we can ensure development is supported, or for the infrastructure requirements for development is supported by that tax base over time.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Okay, there are no speakers on the list. There are no hands from counsel. Now that I've heard from everyone on the speakers list, and I don't see any hands from counsel, it is a requirement that I ask three times if there is anyone who else, let me try that again, it's a requirement that I ask three times if there is anyone else who wishes to speak before we can close the public hearing. For the first time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak or make a submission? For a second time, is there anyone else who wants to speak or make a submission? For the third and final time, is there anyone else who wants to speak or make a submission? Seeing no more further speakers on the list, I would like to note that council members are not permitted to receive any further submissions or hear either a proponent or a opponent to an application once the public hearing has been concluded. So, this means we can't speak to you out in the community, or receive emails, or phone calls on any of these bylaws, until a decision on the bylaws has been made. Any and all communication or questions from this point forward must be channeled through to staff. If there are no further speakers, I declare the hearing closed. Thank you very much, everyone, for your submissions this evening. Um, counsel, I, I would like to, um, test a motion, um, which is to have staff bring back Section J that we entertained at first and second reading for consideration when these bylaws come back, that more closely links the revision in the CAC policy to our priorities around affordable housing and climate change. That is seconded by Counsel Stoner. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this forward is that I have, um, recognized the comments submitted by several of the landowners, um, about the impacts that not including this policy could have in terms of affordability, uh, on, on these lands. But I also think it's important that we ensure that some of our key priorities are connected to this piece of, of policy amendment. Uh, so I think if we can add some additional language, uh, then I think, um, we could test it again with counsel and see if it could go forward, along with these bylaw amendments. If there are no other comments, I will, yes, Counsel Pengill?
Yeah, I, I still have challenges with this one, to be honest. I think for me, it was partly, um, the confusion. This seems like, uh, sort of, uh, related to very, very specific point in time, as opposed to a, a general policy that belongs sort of more generally long-term in the OCP. Um, and so I would rather, um, consider this information, uh, when it comes to, um, deciding particular CACs, um, for these developments, and have these things into consideration. I think we, we have heard too, from the public, that making sure that development is paying for itself and so on is important. Um, and, and so there have been changes, but to refer back to previous policies generally, um, previous iterations of the OCP policy, it's just not something I'm comfortable with right now.
Thank you, Counsel Pengill. Seeing, yes, Counsel Stoner.
Speaking in support of this, I think I was one of the ones who moved, uh, that we actually didn't move forward with the, the original proposal when it came forward, uh, along with the first and second reading. Um, and similarly, the comments that I've heard this evening and received via email, uh, made me, uh, second, give, give pause to that. So, I appreciate us coming back, uh, and looking at it in a more wholesome context.
Thank you. Uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counsel Pengill opposes, motion carries. Thank you. On, um, our agenda is consideration of third reading. This is something that is put in front of counsel as an option with any public hearing. Uh, counsel has the option to move forward none, some, or all of these at third reading tonight. We have had many submissions on, on one of these bylaws in particular. Um, and so, counsel, I put it to you, if there are, um, if anyone wants to move a third reading tonight, uh, this is your opportunity to do so. I'm not seeing any hands. So, that being said, we have one last item on our agenda, um, and that was when Counsel Anderson pulled letter eight from our consent agenda, and that is the only item of business we haven't gotten to tonight. Counsel Anderson, if you wish to speak to that.
Yes, and I'll be brief. Uh, there was some correspondence from Dorian Anderson, which contained some interesting, raised some interesting issues, and contained some interesting references regarding multiple-use paths, MUPs. I believe this, this is an issue that's going to come up again elsewhere, and I would just like to move that it be referred to staff, specifically the engineering staff who may be involved with the multimodal transportation plan. I was with the multimodal transportation plan focus group 10 years ago, and as we come into a new revision of the plan, this would be an excellent venue to treat issues like this, and I would just simply encourage engineering staff or staff to give this consideration. And so that's my motion, it be referred to staff.
Is there a second, or Counsel French seconds that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank, uh, all of our staff here at the district. There were a lot of people behind the scenes that made this go so smoothly tonight, and they all deserve a big pat on the back. I think that went very well. I want to acknowledge our community. Um, we had over 100 people tuned in, whether through the live stream or on the WebEx, um, which is great. And, um, and I thank everyone who participated electronically in our public process tonight. It's not the way we prefer, but it is the way for now. Um, and, um, I'm so glad that everyone, uh, was able to adjust to any technical difficulties and get through and speak to counsel this evening. Um, and so, thank you all very much. With that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to terminate. Moved by Counsel Irwin, seconded by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Good night, and I will see you in September.